You gotta keep on dreaming, please believe it. Despite pressures, they believe and never lose your focus. Cause they will notice that we call the dream killers. They're gonna catch you down.
Spray a little doubt to mess up your game. Move a little closer to tangle up your brain but it's okay, I'm out of their range touch. Mess go down a drain when they can't flush. Shake them off like a running back man brush. Sick of the news, it ain't cool. Trying to put a damp in your day with they news hush. I ain't trying to be root trust, but I gotta do what I do must. Move like it's nothing to lose. What you do if you had my shoes? No time for the blues. Keep a lookout, dream killers on the loose. Let's say I don't cruise, one time for we won't lose.
I just want you to know that I ain't playing around. Ready locked and loaded, you can see it in my eyes. Let them know it's your time. Pay them haters no mind, yeah we ready to fly. You gotta keep on dreaming, please believe it. Despite pressures, they believe and never lose your focus. Cause they will notice that we call the dream killers. They're gonna catch you down. They wanna cut you down.
Dream killers.
They wanna cut you down.
They gonna cut you down.
They wanna cut you down. Yeah. Keep it moving.
I'm not gonna sweat it though, these haters just can't stop me. They steady throwing stones, but I won't let them rock me. I'm moving smooth and slow, but picking up the pace. I'm about to get it though, right in front of our dream killers face.
You gotta keep on dreaming, please believe it. Despite pressures, they believe and never lose your focus. Cause they will notice that we call the dream killers. They're gonna catch you down. They wanna cut you down. They wanna cut you down. They wanna cut you down.
If I said knocking down a wall, and then kicking out friends out of the room, I call the roll. Making whatever happens in the following month or two is anyone's. Yes. Trying to make sense of what they're doing. Turning this person your street, hard to keep on playing. With your time, you waste your money. Make sure you go. All this time I didn't realize that we were enemies. It's hope that we don't have to share the same together. The more that you go with this building destruction, the more that you make your inner lies apparent. When he comes knocking on the door, get me in the house. Gather all the locks they own before you fight. But I wanna be replaced with something that lives in life. Shooting out last fire, layman. Something you kinda want to call. Keep on playing. With your time, you waste your money. Make sure you go. All this time I didn't realize that we were enemies. It's hope that we don't have to share the same together. The more that you go with this building destruction, the more that you make your inner lies apparent.
You are listening to Tarrant County College.
What is your name?
Review active.
It's five o'clock.
Welcome to the Weekly Collegian Report. I'm Kirsten Mahan bringing you the latest news from Tarrant County College. TCC administrators are considering reconstructing the academic lifeline alert system. Learn how the automated system could be rebuilt to improve communication between instructors and students. At least a half dozen students have signed up to join the unofficial white student union. Read about how students are reacting to the club. South Campus is opening its Family Empowerment Center later this month. The center will offer services such as financial literacy and tax preparation as well as a child watch area. And now, here's Taylor Johnson with the entertainment news.
Now through April 30th, the Southeast Library is hosting Noah and Division. An exhibit composed of photos and poetry celebrating National Poetry Month. Library hours are the same as campus hours. Now through May 3rd, the Reflections From The River Exhibit is now up in the East Fort Gallery on Trinity River Campus. The walls are filled with portraits and expressions and students contributed a number of works to make the gallery possible. Now through May 4th, Southeast Campus hosts Benjamin Terry, Services and Narratives, Paintings and Object by the Artist, in Art Corridor 2. Gallery hours are the same as campus hours Monday through Saturday. Now through May 4th, the Annual Student Art Exhibit Studio Details is on display in Art Corridor 1 on Southeast Campus. April 18th, Interconnected Encounters will be the first art exhibit to go up on Trinity River East Campus since its opening. The showcase opens with a reception noon to 3:00 PM in the Waterfall Gallery. The works of students will focus on endangered historic sites they researched and portrayed in their work. April 26th and 27th, South Dance Students and Faculty will perform in the Formal Dance Concert Kaleidoscope in the Carolin Theater. The performance starts at 7:30 PM. April 27th, an Informal Dance Concert featuring South Dance Students will also be in the Carolin Theater. The show starts at 2:00 PM, general admission is $1. Finally, a special event will be the International Festival celebrating multiple cultures with food, dancing, and music. Noon to 2:45 PM, and 6:00 to 7:30 PM April 23rd, and 10:30 AM to 2:00 PM April 24th on Northeast Campus.
You can read these and other stories by picking up the Collegian Print Editions on newsstands every Wednesday, or go to our website, collegian.tccd.edu. You can also follow us on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube.
I'm shit, I don't need sight. Echo location. My rain, I know it's just way out. Little girl, just let me die below your blossom fire. Little girl, just one more time below the blossom fire. There must take me. There must take me. There must take me.
I like that because you-
Welcome ladies and gentlemen. Oh, you can go right ahead.
Where's the chancellor?
I like that because you-
Welcome ladies and gentlemen. Oh, you can go right ahead.
That's why we always kind of leave.
Before we go after you, you're working on a thing.
Welcome ladies and gentlemen to the Budget Workshop and Regular Meeting of the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees on April the 18th. It is 5:00 and I'm calling the meeting to order. And we have, the first order of business is public comments and we have four comments, four people to talk. And the comments cannot last more than three minutes. I'm trying to see if people here are together. Come on, yeah, come on up to the, introduce your- It says public com- I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's alright, come on.
James Toll is going to be speaking about the Ripley Arnold statue and I'm just here to help him in case he gets nervous.
Well, I appreciate that, okay.
No, just it's a wonderful project, that's all I wanted.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that, thank you very much, Doug.
Where's James?
Oh, they're up, he's on the agenda, chancellor. Okay, well, it just says call to order and then it says to, public comment, not to exceed three minutes, information. So Mr. Reggie Gardner?
He's doing this right now.
He's welcome to come help me if I get nervous.
Well, yeah. Alright, I appreciate y'all letting me speak to you. I'm representing Image Tech Office Systems in regards to the Unified Print Item that y'all are gonna be speaking about tonight. I think it's item 31 on the agenda. I'm with Image Tech and I'm the Executive Vice President there and a long-term Tarrant County resident and I know several of you on the board. Image Tech is actually owned by Nina Knight, who's the president of the company and she's also a long-term resident and business owner. Image Tech is also a Tarrant County company and MWBE organization. We were one of the two finalists being considered for this mailroom, Unified Mailroom and Print Management Contract. And we were, I guess finished second in the voting, but I wanted to address you about that and some concerns that we had. We were notified that the committee's decision was very close, but that they, the committee decided to stay with the incumbent for six more years. Image Tech provided a lower price, proven references, proven experience with TCCD, Tarrant County-based company with all the infrastructure here, woman-owned. And if it was really that close, at a better price, and Tarrant County taxpayers, why would the decision not have gone, you know, our direction? You know, with the diversity and initiatives that you had in place in the RFP. We believe that although not intentional, that the process, RFP components and timelines were designed only for the incumbent to prevail for the next contract. And there's a few items that I want to cover regarding that. There was a very aggressive timeline. First of all, this contract was extended back in September, there was a six-month extension. And we actually made our presentation on March the 26th. We were actually notified that we were one of the finalists, March 26th, and then there was a final decision by the committee on April 4th. So it's a very short window. And then again, the whole contract is supposed to begin May the 1st. So a very small timeline to make all of this happen with 300 machines, five copy centers on different campuses, 12 to 14 employees, working within the fulfillment centers. So a very small timeline. There were also large buyouts involved because a lot of machines that were left under contract expiring over the next four, five years. 1.7 million was the number that was given to us to deal with. And after some very late acknowledgement, we were able to-
Mr. Gardner, we have a three-minute, and your three minutes is up, so why don't you sum up?
I'll sum up. We were able to uncover a lot of things, but in a very late timeframe. And I don't feel that we got an opportunity to present it correctly to the committee making the decision. And so, we were just asking for you to postpone this decision tonight for 30 days until you have the chance to really look into it a little more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, chancellor, members of the public, and of the Tarrant County College family. My name is Jerry Coats, I'm the Dean of Liberal Arts at Tarrant County College, Southeast Campus. And, you know, I have a lot more fun in another capacity and that is acting as the administrative liaison to the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society on our campus. For our campus, discovering pathways to student success is much more than just a phrase. It is an absolute charge that I carry for my president and for my chancellor. And there is no more successful organization, nor has there been a more successful year than we have had with our Phi Theta Kappa Society. And I'd like to introduce to you the president of our organization, and she's gonna say a few words. The Beta Delta Omicron President this year is the gem of Zimbabwe and the pride of Southeast Campus. She is Martina Mappa, Martina?
Thank you. Chancellor Hardy, president of the board and members, I would like to present to you our regional and international awards that we at Beta Delta Omicron Chapter of Phi Theta Kappa at the Southeast Campus won this year. Would you like to pass them around?
Sure, yeah.
We would like to thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts for all the support that you have given us this year. Without the financial and moral support that you guys gave us, we would have not been successful as we are today. I also want to say a special thank you to our chancellor for coming out to support us during our regional convention in March and representing us in front of all the other regions. We hope that your support will continue in the future and we also hope that our chapter will continue to make you proud. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, we're so proud of you. Do you want to have a photo? Does it-
I think you should read the names-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Of the awards.
Okay, Honors in Action, Award of Distinction, Theme Eight, Making the Great, Beta, okay. Texas Top Charter, Beta, no, Texas Top Charter.
Texas Top Chap-
Chapter, yes sir.
Say it again.
She's my mother here. Texas Top Chapter.
Okay, one more.
Thank you. Distinguished Honors in Action Project 2013. That's great.
Look at that one. We're gonna let him get on the picture.
I'm gonna get in the picture in just a minute. Distinguished Theme Award, Honors in Action.
Okay, one more.
Okay, this one's blue, it's a star. Distinguished, oh, Regional Officer, who's the distinguished?
That's June.
Congratulations, okay. You want this one, Distinguished Officer?
No, I just want everybody to know what they did.
Well, I want you to know how Mr. Greenhill is coming, that it was absolutely my pleasure to be there with these wonderful students and about another 65 or so students from Tarrant County College and the various campuses along with Dr. Ferguson from Trinity, Dr. Capole from Southeast, Dr. Jordan from South, Dr. Gorge from Northeast. And we had a wonderful time, we even took care of the students from Northwest, Dr. Rocker be there, but it was great. They made us very, very proud. Took us all night to do it, but we did it.
I think y'all should hold your-
I think we should try, but just-
That's next.
Where's the campus president?
I was gonna say, I think we should get the campus president.
Come on, Bill.
Come on, Bill, I forgot, you come on.
Listen up, get quiet.
You guys are real?
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Chancellor, I'm gonna trespass on our three minutes just for one more second. The next time you see Martina and Courtney Muchler, our vice president, they will be walking across the stage on May 10th, graduation.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, there are many stories in the Tarrant County College District, this is-
Thank you.
Can you say that again in the mic, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, there are many wonderful stories in the Tarrant County College District. What you have just seen is just one of them.
Okay, Madam Chancellor, we're ready for, you're next. It says Budget Workshop Roman numeral II. Mark McLendon, Nancy Chang, and Irma Hadley-Johnson.
Johnson Hadley.
James Johnson Hadley, this is not my good day, I'm sorry.
My boss can call me anything. And I'll answer, absolutely. Mr. Greenhill, Mr. William Greenhill, and board members, it is my pleasure to give you an update on our financial status as well as a glimpse into the future between now and August 31, and then on beyond perhaps for a little bit as well. This is Budget Workshop Number Two. I have to always say the number because we promised that we would do more workshops for you and give you an opportunity to help us along the way as we plan for the fiscal year 14, which starts September 1 of 2013. I have as my very able assistant over here, Miss Shelley Birch, who is our consummate make it pretty person. And I think you will be pleasantly pleased with what she has to show you in the way of her artistry tonight. So Shelley, let it, let it, let it roll in. See, start, look at that, just look at that. Ah, and look what happens, you know, six wonderful campuses of Tarrant County College. Y'all do know that whenever I'm talking about TCC now, I say that we have six campuses and I make David Wells very nervous. Every time I say that because he says, now you know, Saks is gonna make us do some very different things if you keep calling it six campuses. I says, well, I understand, you know, it's Trinity River Campus and then we have an East Campus for the health professionals, but I still say it's six because anything that large and that beautiful has to be a campus, so I call it a campus. And notice the open doors on that slide, Shelley is very symbolic. Those, all of our doors are wide open for all of our students to come. And the fact that those doors are so open means that it costs quite a bit of money to make sure that everybody who walks through the door is gonna be helped in one way or another. That is indeed our biggest challenge. So our agenda for tonight is to look at the annual report of the financial conditions of all community colleges in Texas. It is from the Higher Education Coordinating Board. And I showed you this last year and this is an update for this year. Then we're gonna talk about that very famous student success point conversation that we've been having for the last few months and into, in some cases, the last two years. We used to call those momentum points and now they've been renamed to success points. Because every I is on student success these days, not just in Tarrant County, not just in Texas, but all over the United States. Everybody's talking about how are you helping students to move to success? And then the third bullet there is for an update from the Texas Association of Community Colleges Legislative Agenda, especially as it has to do with Senate Bill One. For the Higher Education Coordinating Board's Financial Condition, the very first part of that, and I have very explicit instructions from Nancy Chang on how I'm supposed to do this. Where is Nancy? So if I do it wrong, Nancy, you stop me, okay? The Financial Condition Analysis of Texas Public Community Colleges for 2012 compares the financial strength of the state's 50 community college districts. And you see that she has put there for me in very bold letters that Tarrant County College has a very strong financial position. We have less debt and we have no revenue bond debt. Next one. This is the top 10 institutions, we call it the Big Ten, the largest community colleges in the state. And you can see the yellow line there for Tarrant County College. And you see the columns there, the college district, the campus, excuse me, the composite financial index, the return on net assessment- For the Higher Education Coordinating Board's financial condition, the very first part of that, and I have very explicit instructions from Nancy Chang on how I'm supposed to do this. Where is Nancy? So if I do it wrong, Nancy, you stop me, okay? The financial condition analysis of Texas Public Community Colleges for 2012 compares the financial strength of the state's 50 community college districts, and you see that she has put there for me in very bold letters that Tarrant County College has a very strong financial position. We have less debt, and we have no revenue bond debt. Next one. This is the top 10 institutions. We call it the Big Ten, the largest community colleges in the state, and you can see the yellow line there for Tarrant County College. And you see the columns there, the college district, the campus, excuse me, the composite financial index, the return on net assessment, the operating margin, the primary reserve, the viability ratio, the equity ratio, and the leverage ratio. Now, the first one that Nancy wants me to talk about is the composite, no, the composite index, financial index, and that includes the 2012 combined composite financial index for the public community colleges, which is 4.91. That's the average. It's an increase from 2.79 in 2011. An index of more than 2.1 is the standard used in this report, and that standard was met by 45 of the 50 districts. 2.1, and you can see that the index for Tarrant County College is 10. So we got the highest score that you could get in that category. Leverage. Now she wants me to move to the leverage ratio. That's the last column, and you'll see that our leverage ratio is zero. That means that the leverage ratio measures the amount of debt in relation to net assets and provides an indication of the amount of debt service institution must absorb into future existing resources. So you can see we are in very good condition on the leverage ratio. And then I'll go back to the return of net assets, and you will see that for Tarrant County College, the return on assets is 5.62, which is lower than some of the institutions there. If you look at Houston and you look at South Texas, one of the main differences between our ratio there and some of the others is that we have so many more re, so many more assets than they do. So when we look at that, that brings our return on net assets quite, to be quite low because we are at over a billion dollars in net assets that we have to use there. So that's not a bad number, as far as the fact, it looks like it's a low number, but it's a very good number for Tarrant County College because we do have so many wonderful assets. The operating margin indicates an operating surplus or deficit in the given fiscal year, and of course, you know, we do not operate in deficit mode here at all. The 2012 statewide margin for the community colleges is 6.5%, which was an increase over last year of 3.7%. And you see our operating margin is up to 11.56%. The primary reserve ratio measures the financial strength and flexibility by comparing expendable net assets to total expenses, and this measure answers the question of how long can the institution survive without additional net assets generated by operating revenue? And so you see there on the primary reserve, we are at .60. For the viability ratio, that next column, it measures the financial health of the institution by comparing total expendable assets to certain non-current liabilities. And the 2012 statewide ratio for the public community colleges is 8.95, and for Tarrant County College is 54.57. And then, of course, the equity ratio is a comparison of the net assets to total assets and is used when institutions have no outstanding indebtedness. And you see there we are at 92.9 because our total indebtedness is so very, very small. So again, this year, as in last year, you can see that Tarrant County College is in excellent financial condition, and I know that you appreciate that, and it is always our goal to help keep it that way. We have a wonderful financial staff who manages all of the money of the college. They do a wonderful job with that, and we give a special thanks to that staff. Any questions on that part? Go back, Shelley, in case someone has a question. Any questions, board members, on the financial condition of the college?
How do you-
Question?
How do you think we could increase our return on equity?
Well, we can get rid of some of your assets.
No.
That's the main reason why our return on equity is so low, is because we have so many assets. You'd have to really increase the money that's coming in, you know, a whole lot. Mark, you want to address that? Nancy, you want to address that? You have to really increase the number of dollars that you've got to ask. Come to the microphone, please.
It's net asset divided by total asset. They took the general obligation bond off, so the only thing we have is the liability is our compensation absence. So we are almost, we are number one in the state, so we are the highest of all. So we have, is a 92.9. If you look the whole column, we are the highest of all 10 colleges, of the Big Ten, and the state average is 50.63. The highest maximum is 92.2. That's us.
But in return on net assets, what goes into our return? What's the income again?
It's a return, which one? Return on net assets, number, that one, yeah.
Okay. This is return on assets because we have a higher, the asset minus the, the increase for that one is we have all the high operating expenses. And the reason, it's not because we hire, that net asset in ours is the fund of balance that the annual, we increase our net asset from income minus the expenditure. Because our net asset's so high, it's billion dollars, other people don't have that kind of asset. So the divider, the bottom line, the asset's so high, that's what make us so low. It's not because our, we didn't do good, it's we have so high asset, our two campuses have a billion dollars. So the bottom line, we have almost 900, 900 some million dollars. The net asset return, we only last year, we make 51 million dollars, but that's not bad. But because our, the full asset is so high, so that makes what make this number lower. It's not because our bad number, it's just because we have so much asset.
Mr. Heed, I looked at that number, and Mrs. Chang actually has described to you the mathematical concept. What this is, is the economic return. What you're doing is you're looking at net income, which is revenue minus expenses, or assets minus liabilities. So you're looking at your P and L divided by your balance sheet. If we look at who is higher than ourselves on return on net assets, the only outlier that we look at there is we look at, if you look at that point, the outlier from the big six would be Houston. And so we asked that question. We asked, and we knew that, and we were preparing ourselves for that question, the chancellor, Nancy, and myself, and says, why they have that? Why could they have such a high return on net assets and we don't? We understand somebody like Colin having it a little bit higher alone star, and the difference, if you look at the landscape between Houston Community College and Tarrant Community College, first of all, Tarrant Community College was built in the 50s, so you have buildings at-
60s.
60s, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was thinking about my birthday, Chancellor. Sorry, sorry. So anyways, in the 1960s, so when you have buildings that are from 1960 forward, you're going to have some expenditures. Now, when we look at the landscape, why is Houston Community College so different? The difference that Houston Community College has is they have a lot of rental spaces. They have spaces that are in buildings, they have spaces that are in high schools. So the maintenance that they will have compared to what we have will not be the same. Now, Houston Community College has just passed about, I would say, about a $400 million bonds. It was passed by the public. In 25 years from now, I want to see that ratio, that number, I will predict, will be quite different. I think it's going to be growing closer to us. Does that answer your question, sir, or?
Yes, it does, except I guess my question is, have you looked at ways that we can increase our income using our assets?
Mr. Heed, I want you to see, I'm not losing my hair, but I can tell you, and you can ask the chancellor, in fact, we're going to show you in the board meeting, things that we're doing. We're looking at every alternative, both domestically and internationally, to look at opportunities, and we're looking to partner more with our partners here, and we're looking at different ways. We're even looking at ways to not only to increase our income, but to reduce our costs, and the chancellor may talk to you at some time about our textbook initiative. So we are looking not only to reduce the profitability of this institution, what we are focused is on how we can reduce the cost to a student because that, to me, is our target market, and that's what I really think we're looking for. In addition to the success of the students, we're trying to think how we can make that, and yes, we are continuously looking at it. But that being said, if anybody has an offer for us to look at, I think the chancellor and I would be more than happy. Is that right, ma'am?
As long as it's legal. Nancy Chang just handed me one more thing because Nancy is so proud of our financial condition, as she should be. She works on it. She said, let the board know what the differences are. The change in net assets for us was 51,929,000 over assets at the beginning of the year was 923 million. So you see, we went up there over a billion. At South Texas, as an example, their change in net assets was 36 million compared to 257 last time. So we were at 923, they were at 257 last year. Colin was at 392, and plus this year, they changed, they added 25 million. So you see, we're just in a different financial structure than many of these institutions. Or in Houston, as an example, started out, and for years, they didn't have a campus anywhere. All of theirs, you know, Houston Community College serves only the city of Houston, and they started out as a part of the high school, the ISDs, I shouldn't say high schools, but Houston Community College was an outgrowth of the ISD, and that's why it was just for Houston. And for years, they didn't have anything except they worked out of the school buildings in the evenings and on weekends and that kind of thing. So it's just a different situation for us. Other questions on this report? Okay. The next thing I want to talk about is those really wonderful student success points. We've gone over those. Mr. Greenhill, Mr. Carter, and Mr. Heed and I were in Santa Fe, New Mexico, three weeks ago, I guess, where we attended the trustees institute, the board of trustees institute, and each of the colleges that were there had their student success points in the notebook. And of course, I, as I always do, looked at those and ran upstairs as soon as I had an opportunity and got on my computer, got my Excel spreadsheet out, and pulled out the Big Eight. Eight of the Big Ten were there. Colin was not there, and South Texas was not there. So I looked at all of the data, put it on the spreadsheet, and that night, I was talking with the count about another matter, and I was bragging about how well we had done in some of the categories and that we were number one in developmental ed and having reached milestones, and that's something that we are all very, very proud of. So I want to go over the student success points with you now. They are based on the premise that educational achievement includes more than just traditional terminal accomplishments, and that was something about which we had a lot of discussion and in many instances, debate. The Texas Association of Community Colleges, that's made up of all the CEOs of the 50 community colleges in the state, along with our association, worked with the coordinating board for months, really even over a year, and I served on one of the committees that was designed to help the coordinating board look at just how we were going, what we were going to count as a point, and then how we were going to go about accomplishing those. The success points are also designed to measure performance of institutions in a way that promotes effort to increase the rate of student progression and achievement, and note the word student progression because when you look at the success point continuum, you will see that we have built in incentives to move students through to success faster than we have done before. These are the milestones that we are to reach. When students come to us who are not college-ready, it is our responsibility to get them college-ready in reading, writing, and math. And when we get them college-ready, we'll get two points for that. In math, that's one point, and the other one point comes from a half point in reading and a half point in writing. In the past, we've had developmental ed courses for all three of those. This coming fall, we have been mandated by the coordinating board to have reading and writing in one course. We'll have to combine those, and because of that combination, we'll get a half point for reading and a half point for writing. We'll also get a point when students complete 15 credit hours, when they complete 30 credit hours, when they complete a degree or a certificate, we'll get two points, or if they complete the core. It's not up there, but that's, we'll get two points for that. So if a student completes the core curriculum without a degree or without a certificate and transfers, we'll get those two points. We'll get an additional quarter point if a student completes in a critical field, and critical field has not been totally decided at this point. The definition right now says STEM and allied health programs, and there's debate over whether or not the allied health programs are going to be allowed to stay there. I just talked with the coordinating board just this afternoon, asking a specific question about which I was a little bit puzzled, even though we had a very long discussion just yesterday at TACC, and it just goes to show how fluid things are. These are the points that stand today. We think they're going to stay. There may be a little bit of tweaking, but we don't think the points are going to change at all. And then, of course, if a student transfers with 15 semester hours to a four-year college university, we also get points for that. So this is basically what it looks like on this kind of chart. A total of two points for making a student college-ready, one point for math, one point for reading and writing, one point for completing the first 30 hours, one point for earning a degree or a certificate, and one, one-fourth of a point for being in a critical field, and two points for transferring after 15 semester hours. Now, let me go back to that first one. Go back to the first one, Shelley, where you get one point for becoming college-ready. That is, if we can get a student college-ready within three years. The third year is the year where they, if they're measuring and a student is, has completed math within the third year of the, their enrollment, we'll get a point for that. If the student completes math in year four, we get no points for it. So what I said a few minutes ago, I want you to pay attention to the progression piece to move students through. It's designed to help us move them through. There is no time base on the first college credit course, completing college-level math, a college-level reading and writing. Whenever they do that, we get a point for that. Whenever they complete their degree, we'll get two points for that, and there is no timeline on that. There may be later, but right now, there is no timeline. But in order to get the points for a transfer to a university with 15 semester hours, they give us four years for that. We measure in that fourth year, so if a student is ready to transfer, the fourth year they are here, and that's the year we are counting, we'll get the two points for that. So it's very technical. It'll take a little bit of work on our part to make sure that we understand it all as we go through, but it's pretty much decided at this point, and it will become effective this coming fall. September 1, 2013 is when it will become effective. By the way, we do get points for dual credit, and that's one of the areas that we intend to really ramp up, not just because we want points for it, but because it helps our students and also helps us when they come to us, if they've been through dual credit, they tend to do significantly better. And all of the students who come through dual credit would be eligible, I should, I think it's right, all of them are TSI complete when they come through dual credit, so we don't, absolutely, we don't have to worry about that, right? And so you see, critical fields up here identified as computer science, engineering, math, physics, nursing, allied health, and teaching certificates for math and science. I asked specifically about the teaching certificates today from the coordinating board, senior staff, and they says, well, we know that's in there, but that just might change. The talk is to give that point only to the baccalaureate degree. And I says, well, we have, we train teachers, and they go on to get their baccal-, I say, yeah, we know, but, you know, we're looking at the final piece of their training, that's what we're thinking about. So they had told us they were going to give us credit for that, and now we're not sure if they're going to give it or not. As days go by, we are always prepared for a change in position, and we're doing pretty well with holding on to that. Now I wanted to show you in those success points that the coordinating board measures, what Tarrant County College District looks like compared to the Big Ten. The yellow line is ours, and those first three columns that you see represent the change- And those first three columns that you see represent the change from fiscal year 2010 to fiscal year 2011 in developmental education. And you can see that in math, we increased fifty-five percent over a year. And in reading, a hundred-and-thirty-two percent, writing, ninety-three percent. So you can see why I was so ecstatic about that when I saw those numbers. I said, we're number one throughout the state in what we've done. I said, but I wonder what Collin looks like. I figured Collin didn't look anything like we do because of the way they handle developmental ed. They have a whole different approach to it. And South Texas, who tends to always lead all ten of us with their increases. South Texas College, I'll point out, along with many of the other Big Ten, have been in Achieving the Dream since it started, which was, this is, I think, year number eight, maybe year number nine for them. This is year number three for us. And we have made tremendous strides in three years. Well, we are starting our third year. We're not even finished through our third year. So we have made absolutely wonderful progress in helping developmental ed students get out of developmental ed. But if you go to that next column and you see the percentage increase, this is the increase over a, from '09, fiscal year '09, to fiscal year '11. And there is a difference between those two. The first three columns are fiscal year '10, and the next columns are fiscal year '09 because the Coordinating Board said they didn't have what they considered to be really good data on the developmental ed side of the house. And so they didn't want to put it out there because they didn't feel good about it. They weren't sure if they were always comparing apples to apples. So that first, next column, the number four, past first college-level math course. And you see, we had eight percent increase over a two-year period. That is not a good number, but I'll tell you that one of the main differences, I think, and I've talked about this with the faculty as I have gone around the district talking. I've met with Trinity, Northeast, and Northwest now. And I said to all of them, I think, well, the main reasons why we're as low as we are is not because our faculty isn't doing as good or better job than other faculties around the state. I think it is a policy issue for us. We have not been very proactive in making sure that students who are way below the threshold of being college-ready get into academic courses. And many of these institutions have moved to that. Well, they have systems that will help students decide that you really need to do something else right now. You need to get in a different program so that you can be successful in that program and then come back on the credit side of the house. Now that's exactly what South Texas does all the time, and they have been doing that for a long time. Their goal is to make sure that every student who comes in an institution is successful. That means, then, that they use a lot of different tracks. And I've said to the faculties, if we want to increase our percentage in a lot of these areas, we're going to have to have different policies. The thought is not to turn anybody away, but to help every student get to the best place for him or her. And so that's one of the reasons why we don't look as good there. And if you're looking at the reading, eleven percent, eleven percent, and San Jack right above us with seventy-one and seventy-seven, and Lone Star with thirty-two and twenty-nine, and then there's Houston with one-twenty-two, and then five percent. We don't know what happens with their writing. I guess they spend all their time reading. I don't know. But I will point out that as you look at the numbers for Houston, keep in mind that Houston has the highest percentage of economically disadvantaged students in the state among the Big Ten. And it has the highest percentage of educationally disadvantaged students in the state among the Big Ten. Yet, they tend to get, will get some really good results. If you look at their numbers across, you see two low ones there, passing the writing-level course and passing the fifteen semester hours. Those are the two that are pretty low. If you go all the way over to almost the end, the number of degree or core curriculums or certificates, you see that TCC stacks up very well generally. But still, if you look at Lone Star, at a hundred-and-eight percent generally. When you see large numbers there, you're looking at colleges that have done a really good job of putting out the certificate programs to their students and helping them select those programs. That's generally the case. And then of critical fields, we are really low there, at nine percent versus some of those other numbers that are there. And that's primarily because all of our critical fields courses are limited enrollment. So we have very few, except for our nursing program, you know, everything else is pretty small as far as enrollments are concerned. You can only get so many students at so many stations. For instance, if you look at the allied health programs at Trinity River, I think every one of those courses have very small classes except for nursing. And nursing, we have almost five hundred students in that program. But when you put five hundred students against fifty thousand, the numbers still get pretty low. So that's an area where we've got to do a much better job. I've asked Dr. Wells to bring one of his employees from the TCC Opportunities Center to the district office to help us create what we all call stackable credentials. Look at the various programs that we have in the district and figure out ways to help students get level-one, low-level certificates at first. And I always give the example at Dr. Ferguson's campus where the Continuing Ed Department started a Flebotomy Program. I think that's an excellent example of what I'm talking about. Sixteen students, I believe, enrolled in that program. It was only a sixteen-week program, one semester. All sixteen students finished it, all of them passed the state licensure exam, and immediately about fifty of them got jobs. And that's the kind of, and you can count that. That counts as a degree or certificate completion. And so we count credit courses as well as non-credit courses. Go all the way to the end of that, and you see that we had twenty-six percent increase in the transfer to a four-year college or university. Only Houston beat us, again. And, you know, Houston beat us, we know, because they have an absolutely exemplary program with the University of Houston downtown. The students who go to Houston Community College, who are interested in going to the university, have a pretty seamless pathway. They work very, very closely together, and so they have, they've done a great job. Now keep in mind, the majority of those students in Houston are inner-city, low-income. Go to them with low preparation, but they're doing a great job with that. But that's okay. We're going to catch them and surpass them. They're only two points ahead of us right now. Now, if you look at those, all of those points by area, and you'll see that Tarrant County College, again, number two in math, reading, and writing, next one. And the next one, you'll see, and the college-level math course at eight percent takes us way down to third from the bottom. And the college-level reading course at eleven percent. And again, see Houston up there at one-twenty-two, but Houston is the outlier. I mean, they are just doing something very different there. And then for the college-writing course, you know, we're number five, like right in the middle. The fifteen semester hour completion, we are close to the top there at number four, at twelve percent. And for students who complete thirty semester hours, the increase there was twenty-one percent. So we're doing a lot of help there with those students. I don't quite get the difference between the fifteen and the thirty. Generally, you would expect that to be the reverse. More students get fifteen semester hours and something happens than those that get thirty. We'll be digging down into this data a lot deeper to see if we can figure out what's going on with those numbers. And when we do that, it'll help us determine how we get students to a fifteen semester hour point sooner. I will tell you that all these things we're talking about now is really heavy lifting for our faculty and staff. Again, until we can get students on the front side and help them understand where they best fit within Tarrant County College, we're probably going to continue to experience these kinds of low points. And then at the degree core or certificate, twenty-three percent. And, you know, twenty-three percent sounds pretty good until you look at the other institutions that are significantly higher than we are. I want to point out one more time, though, that all of those institutions above us up there, and including South Texas, I'm not sure if Collin is even at Achieving the Dream School. I don't think it is. It's not. All the rest of them are, and they've been at it for a long time. And I will tell you one more time, that I think our decision to go into Achieving the Dream was absolutely one of the best ones that we've made in years. Because what it did for us was force us to take a look at what we were doing. First of all, look at our data. We used to always get all of our data together for the Coordinating Board reports, CB-001, CB-002, all those numbers, and we just sent it off to Austin. Nobody ever really looked at it. And some of the early days, the Coordinating Board has some glitches in its reports, and some people didn't trust the validity of them. They have come a long, long, long way. They have absolutely outstanding ways to massage the data, and they do a good job. They are now comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. The one thing, however, that we don't know, when we look at the percent of students who progressed in math, we don't know what that college is counting as college-level math. As one of the things we talked about yesterday in Austin, is that there are a few things that we have got to get together on because it's to all of our advantage. If we were not counting algebra as our college-level math for the majority of our students, we would be much higher than eight percent. I guarantee you that. Now, the other thing I'll tell you is that all the community colleges have joined together through TACC to commission a study by the University of Texas in the Dana Center. Dr. Yurit Trisman, who is a world-renowned mathematician, is leading that program. And all of us chipped in money to give some seed money there. And then the Houston Foundation, the Texas Foundation, I believe the Gates Foundation, and somebody else put in money to help us because everybody is concerned about, what do we do at community colleges to get through the finish line? And so when that, they're looking at statistics, quant way and stat way, qualitative and quantitative. Because they see from some research that students can do statistics when they can't do algebra. It just clicks with them better. So that's one of the things we're looking at. It may be that we can get everybody to agree that algebra is necessary only in certain fields. We know some fields really do need that, but many of them don't. And I think when we do that, we'll see a difference. I've already talked about critical fields, and you saw how we fit there. Go back one more time, shall we? And then that last one, I don't want to forget that one. Say it one more time. You know, we're number two at twenty-six percent growth in the transfer to universities, and that's very good. Because that's two points there. Okay. Now, one other thing I'll tell you before I leave, that you don't have to go back. You see that we have many opportunities to get points. As I told the faculty today and those other days, I'm convinced that we will live up to the expectations from the Coordinating Board that we're going to do just fine. It's just that we have to be a little bit more focused and determined about how we intake students and what we do with those students after they, we have them in. We have to pay very particular attention to a lot of them. One of the things that we do not do well, and most community colleges don't do well, some better than others, but we don't help students stay on track. Students don't stay on track by themselves unless they're very focused. And many of them aren't. They'll just come in, they'll look at the schedule, oh, that fits my work time, or that fits my- they'll just take anything. Just take something, you know? If you look at, we got the Almanac for community colleges a couple of days ago, three days ago, I guess. I went through that, and I did my little spreadsheet like I always do, pull out the Big Ten, how do we fit, where do we fall? And to look at the number of hours, a student graduates from Tarrant County College with an associate's degree with an average of ninety-four hours. It should take no more than sixty, sixty-five, but that's across the state. And that's because community colleges have allowed students just come in and just kind of take courses as they will. Well, that's the main reason why the Coordinating Board put those progressive points. So you don't get a point if you don't get them out in a certain length of time. So it's designed to help us have a little bit more urgency about what we do. But we can get those points, and we know we're going to get them. Now, at this point, we're still at ten percent of our appropriation. The state is saying we're going to hold back ten percent. You know, there was a big push for it to be ninety-five, excuse me, twenty-five percent, but it didn't last. You were there, you were Mr. Green there with me in Austin when Dan Branch, Representative Dan Branch, said he tried, but he failed to get the votes that he needed, so it was back to ten percent, and we hope it stays at ten percent.
Let me ask you a question. On these percentages, isn't it true that we're really measured against ourselves?
For this year, for the success points. And that was something that we really argued long and hard with the Coordinating Board because they weren't inclined to agree to that. We said to them, look, this is new. We're not exactly sure, really, you know, how are we going to fine-tune this? We don't need to be competing against each other. And they finally acquiesced and said, okay, for this year, we'll promise that we're only going to do year number two. So right now, if our appropriation were what it is for next year, what it is today, and we hope it to be a little bit more, where it was fifty-point-three million, fifty-point, how many millions did we get last year? Something like that. Well, they'll take away ten percent of that and hold it, and then make us earn it back through these various points. Now what we don't know is what happens to the money if we don't earn it back. You know, we've asked them to put it in escrow and let it roll over to the next year. They have not promised that. They haven't promised that, so we don't know. So we're going to be working really hard to earn every penny of our money back. We don't want it going into a deep hole someplace. So if you look at this slide on the success points, we'll change that next time because we stopped using momentum. That was from time before. But you'll see that the momentum points or the success points that we would have earned would be sixty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-two. That's based on a three-year average of our success. They went back and looked at all of these data points that I talked to you about, reading, writing, math, fifteen hours, thirty hours, all those points. If they looked at how TCC did with all of those, then that's where we would be, and we would have six-point-six-one percent of the state's points. Now, if you look at a place like Dallas, you look at Lone Star, and you look at Houston, that's because they're all larger than we are. Alamo is also larger, a little bit larger than we are, so we're like number five in size. But if you look at that, you'll see that our points also track that. Now, if you look at the weighted points, you see where we get the most points is either fifteen hours, where we got fifteen thousand, three-twelve, and degrees and certificates, ten thousand, two-hundred-and-sixteen. A degree completion, a certificate completion, and core completion all count for the same thing. You cannot count that twice. So if a student enrolls and gets a certificate that year, and at the same time is eligible for a degree, and that happens a lot of times, and at the same time has completed the core, you still only get two points. You can't get six, so. So one of the things that we'll want to do, something we've talked about, is how we award those certificates as people earn them. Because that way, you'll get a point. You don't want to wait and let a student get finished with the associate before you award the certificate. Students may still be here going to school, but you'll want to award that certificate as soon as that student has earned it. And then the next year, whenever they earn a degree, we get another point. So we'll have to be smart about how we do that. But again, look at the critical fields where we are woefully under where we really ought to be, and we're going to be working on that. Next one.
Also, one question, on the math scores, because we were low with that. When did our math emporium start? I mean, is that, that should make one heck of a difference in that area, I would think.
Absolutely, but that was for the fiscal year that ended eleven, twelve, twelve, I guess, eleven, twelve. So we, yes, we certainly expect the math emporium. Dr. LeBlanc has talked about the various, the tremendous increase that has been seen on Northwest. The rest of you, I haven't spoken to individually, I don't think. Are you seeing a lot of increase, Dr. Jordan? In the math emporium? You are. Dr. Ferguson, doctor? Okay. Dr. Dawidge is not here tonight. He had to be at AACC early. All of us, most of us, I shouldn't say all of us, many of us are going tomorrow. But where is Jackie? Do you know what that number, how is it doing on Northeast? Do you know? Doing fair. Oh, okay. That's right, because you all have that project going. Northeast is participating in a national project to look at mob math. The one thing that you'll find going on in community colleges all over the country is we have so many initiatives because everybody's looking for something that works. And since we really don't know what works, we keep trying different things. So Northeast is the only campus, I think, that still has mob math. And that's because they're participating in that national program. They already were there. So we certainly expect that the math emporium will do a lot. We're also hoping that the boot camp is also going to raise this up. One of the biggest challenges we have with the boot camp is that it's difficult for advisors and counselors to get students to understand that they need to take it. And the main reason the students don't understand, I think they might understand, they just say they can't do it because they can't get financial aid. If they are only enrolled in non-credit work- If they're only enrolled in non-credit work, and that's what the boot camp is, they can't get financial aid. That was one of the main reasons why I was pushing so hard to find some foundation support, and we got that through the Richardson Foundation. But still, students are looking for that financial aid. So a part of our job is to help students understand that if they are not ready for these developmental courses, they will go into those courses, and if they're not successful after the first semester, they'll get an academic warning letter from financial aid. And the next semester, if they don't pass, they'll get academic suspension from financial aid. And so they can't get financial aid anymore anyway after a year. And not only that, they've gotten a GPA that's very, very low and they have to make As to make up for the Fs. So that's a place where we really have to work a lot harder on our students. This next section is on an update on Senate Bill One. And so far, we got this really good news yesterday. This changed because they were telling us that the Senate Finance Committee's recommendation was to pay only for the, to pay benefits only for the people for whom their money would cover. So if we got $50.3 million in appropriation and our salaries were $150 million, they were going to give us benefits and retirement only for the people that were covered by the $50 million, and that was a big, big hit for us. We kept showing them the error of their ways and kept pushing and pushing, and we finally got to them agreeing to be 50% of the cost. Whatever the costs are that we incur, they'll pay 50% of that. So yesterday, when I learned that, I sent Nancy a text or an email and asking her, what difference would that make for us if they pay 50/50 or if they pay only for what they give us the appropriation to cover? And Nancy says, we come out a little bit behind on the health insurance and a little bit above on the retirement. Did I get it right? Opposite. A little bit better on the insurance and a little bit less on the retirement. Okay. All right, next one. This is Senate Bill One. And if you look down at the yellow, you can see, well, first of all, look on the core operations. One of the things that we advocated for with the Senate and the House was to give each institution $1 million as a part of the core operations of that college. And that's because some of the smaller institutions in the state have a really, really hard time staying out of the way of the acts from the Coordinating Board because they keep talking about closing a lot of those schools. And if you look around the state at the economic needs of those areas and the educational needs of the people, all of us in the association felt that the community colleges were vital to their communities and vital to the health of this state. And so we advocated for a $1 million appropriation. The Senate Finance Committee was very surprised and questioned us on the day they had those of us from the large institutions generally, not generally, always, when they have testimony before their committees, they have three people from the large institutions, three from the medium size and three from the small size. So they can get kind of a balanced feel for what we're all saying. And this year, every time we went before the House or the Senate, all of us were saying the exact same things. And they were very pleased to see that, commented on it, and bought into giving that $1 million to every institution. They said to us, when they were talking to us from the large institutions, you do realize that you're leaving money on the table for the small schools. And we said, well, not really, because if students can't go to school one place, they'll come to where they can go, and we still have to service those people. They're Texans and, you know, they're citizens. But if you look at the student success points, they're looking at 11,585,432 is what they're estimating. That's just an estimate. That's, again, is based upon our last three years of performance. And then to contact our funding would be 98 million with a total of 111 million, which is about $8 million more than what we got last year. That's the Senate bill, and that would be great if we could get that. Now, the next slide shows you the House, that says SB One, but that's the House Committee's substitute Senate Bill One. You know, they have their own thing. And they show us getting $106 million rather than 111. So the Senate bill is absolutely more favorable to us. They are getting ready now to put both of those bills in the conference committee, and we will see how it comes out. We're asking all of our Tarrant County delegation, and we'd ask you as board members to join us, and asking our Tarrant County delegation to vote for the Senate version. So, you know, we have a number of new people down there, but we've been in touch with all of them. They all know us, they know who we are. All of them were on Northeast Campus a few months ago, right before they went to Austin, I believe. And Larry Darnage hosted them out there. Diane Patrick was the person who led that, and we had an opportunity to talk with every one of them. Every one of them was there, and that was very good. So they know us, they like us. I don't know what they'll say, I think they understand our needs, but we really need all of you to reach out to all of them and especially those that you know quite well. We're expecting slight growth in the tune of maybe $3.5 million in our tax valuation. Again, we don't know how much that will be just based upon the things that are available to us now. Nancy's estimating that to be between 1 and 3%. The next slide. The credit hour tuition rate, you know, will be, again, $55 and then 55 for next year. You have voted for that increase over a three-year period, 2014, '15 will be the third year, and all of the money that we generate from that tuition increase is to be used for student sticky spaces. We're expecting a 1.2% of enrollment would generate about half million dollars to be added to what we already have. That's another 50,000-foot view. Questions? Comments?
Well done, Chancellor.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions?
Go back to the previous slide, please.
Ms. Appleman, turn on your...
Turn your mic on, Ms. Appleman.
She just wanted to look at it.
Oh, she just wanted to look, okay.
Just out of curiosity, is that 10% going to be phased in or...
Or what?
Annually? Because I heard that they may phase it in over two bienniums or three.
At this point, they are talking about 10% of each year in the biennial. That's the point now. Just the other day, we heard some more talk coming from some House people about 25%, but we don't think there is any real traction to that.
Any further questions? Comments? Thank you.
I started at 5:15. I'm giving you back a few minutes before my hour is up.
Really appreciate it.
So I guess I would, before I walk away, ask you the same thing I always ask you, and that is, do you have any more guidance for me? I received information in writing from Mr. Heath and Mr. Carter about their thoughts about the financial condition of the college and making sure we stay in good condition and not go over a cliff. We're very well aware of those and certainly take those into consideration. We're looking at, of course, how do we increase our income? You're going to hear from us very soon on some recommendations of things you might want to consider from the, well, not here from me, you're going to hear from the Planning Implementation Committee on some things they have about perhaps revenue sources for the college with some of the holdings that we have.
Any further guidance for the Chancellor so far?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we know that we have to change to get better, and we know that we're making great strides. But when you compare it against other schools, we know that there's still a gap there, and we're working hard to bridge that gap. And I'd just like to say, and I probably speak for the rest of the trustees, but at least for myself, we want you to know that we support you in all the activities you're doing and achieving the dream. We know it's hard on the faculty and the staff, but we just want you to know that we're behind you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you, board members.
We will now continue the meeting. Okay, continue the meeting with item number four, which is, we're going to, is the approval of the minutes for the meeting of March the 7th, 2013. The minutes are in the package. Are there any comments to amend the minutes or a motion to approve them?
Move for approval, Mr. President.
Okay, Carter moves for approval and seconded by...
Second.
There is a second? Okay. A whistling net. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Our next item is number five, consideration and approval of the, of approval of the Ripley-Arnold Monument location proposal. Ms. Hadley?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to call for Ms. Nina Petty, who is going to introduce our guest.
Good evening, Chancellor, Board of Trustees. I'm not sure Mr. Toll needs much introduction for all the good work that he's done around our city over the years. Tonight, he is here on behalf and as a coordinator for planning and development with the Tarrant Regional Water District. I've also provided you, Chancellor, some letters that you might want to look at, and I'd be more than happy to allow you to read those or for me to do that, or I can pass them to James to do that. But James is here to talk about the John V. McMillan Plaza-Ripley-Arnold Monument that they're requesting to use some of our land to do. So do you want me to read these or would you like to do that?
Sure, please do. Please, please do.
And James will tell you all about this. But this first letter is from Larry Anfin, who is the president, of course, distributor, and is writing on behalf of the Anfin family. He says, "Thank you to the Tarrant County College District for their consideration for the use of TCCD property for the location of John V. McMillan Plaza and the Major Ripley-Arnold Monument. Our family is blessed to live in this community and to have the opportunity to bring to fruition a monument celebrating the original Fort Worth and to honor our grandfather is very special. Also, thank you to Tarrant Regional Water District, the Tarrant County Historical Commission, and Downtown Fort Worth Initiatives for their support of this project." The Anfin family, and I understand that they are contributing a quarter of a million dollars to this monument and plaza. The next one is really to Chancellor Hadley. It's a message, "Hello, all. Just wanted to pass along a bit of information regarding the Ripley-Arnold Project. Eddie Sandoval, retired TCC psychology professor, is unable to attend the board meeting, but wanted Irma Johnson Hadley to know he would be performing the ground blessing ceremony at the June 6, 2013 event. He has performed the ground blessing ceremony for a number of significant locations and events, including the Texas Motor Speedway, LaGrave Field, and the last jet leaving the Carswell Air Force Base. Hope this is helpful and look forward to seeing you all tonight." And at this juncture, I will pass it on to Mr. Toll to do a presentation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petty and Chairman, Chancellor, board members. Thank you for hearing us. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Testing one, two, three. I have here today, and they will not speak unless you would like for them to, Mr. Vic Henderson, he's president of the Tarrant Regional Water District. Mr. Jim Lane is a board member of the Tarrant Regional Water District. Mr. J.D. Granger is executive director of the Trinity River Vision Authority. Mr. Anfin, you just heard a letter from, he was going to be here earlier, but he couldn't stay this late. He had another matter to attend to. Claire Riddell with the Tarrant County Historic Commission, Doug Harmon with the Ripley-Arnold Monument Committee, Bob Holmes with the Tarrant County Historic Commission, Shanna Kate is planning and development director of TRVA, Stacy Pierce is with Pierce Communications. She's working with us on the ceremony that will coincide with the opening and dedication of this. So I really appreciate you being here. I don't know if you want to expand that to the full screen or not, if you can. You would go up there to the, do you want me to show you how to do that?
Here you go.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Shelley says she knows how to do that.
You know, I really applaud you for your emphasis on academics and math and all of these things. I really applaud you. This monument is pretty much, we looked at a lot of things around the whole country. And if we were going to model this after anything, it's modeled after the George Washington Monument in Union Square. Our monument will be the same scale, it's going to be about 22 feet tall. It'll be 12 and a, the actual statue, well, let's go ahead. I won't bore you. I know you've got a busy schedule. I've looked at your agenda. Go ahead. We have located this at the center line of Taylor Street and the river, okay? This is the best location for this monument. This is where Major Arnold founded Fort Worth. He showed up here on a horse with a sword. By the way, they never drew the sword. And the sword was just part of his uniform. It wasn't a part of, you know, anything to harm anybody. As you can see, that's your Trinity campus there in the background. So this is very prominent on your campus. It just so happens that you own this land right there to the right-hand side of Taylor Street. This goes back to the Radio Shack acquisition and then the, and then your acquisition. It is not land that frankly you could use for buildings because it's within our floodway, but it is a great location for the monument. I just wanted you to know where we're talking about. And maybe we should make sure you understand, if there's anybody that has any questions on this slide, maybe I should answer them now. This is part of the view corridor coming down from downtown. In the downtown plan, we have a series of view corridors. Taylor Street is one of our major view corridors. That means we would not want to build any kind of buildings in this view corridor. Okay, we can go ahead. This is the actual mock-up of the statue, which is in Missouri as we speak. I've been up there to see it. It is 12 and a half feet tall. You can see it's very much a replica of the way Major Arnold looked when he founded Fort Worth. Clara and many other people here in the audience, Doug particularly, have helped us be sure that every detail of this statue is representative of what the major looked like when he arrived in Fort Worth. Go ahead. We've modeled our stonework after the FDR Memorial in Washington, DC. So this happens to be granite from Minnesota. Our granite, we think, will come from Coast Springs, a granite down in Marlborough Falls, which is exactly where the courthouse granite came from. So the granite on our monument will be the same granite that is on the courthouse downtown, which we, I happened to work on the courthouse downtown, the latest remodel. I did not work on the 1894.
Disclaimer.
This is, this is actually a profile of the plaza. You can see that the granite will be a very, pretty massive piece of stone, which we think is appropriate for this location. The major will sit on top, it'll be about 12, 12 and a half feet tall. There will be granite benches around the periphery of this plaza. And by the way, this plaza is designed to accommodate a classroom. So if, for example, one of your classes wanted to come down and do a Texas history class or just a seminar, it's designed to accommodate more or less the same number of people that would be in a classroom. There you see a plan of it. I don't know if I want to go through all the details. All the benches are around the periphery. Those are granite benches. The granite pavement is in the middle. Those points that you see on the plaza, there does -- it's not -- it's an irregular base on purpose because one point goes to the Clear Fork, one point goes to the West Fork of the Trinity, one point goes to the main Trinity River itself, and one point goes to the courthouse in downtown. So, all of this is designed with a purpose. Go ahead. We will also come back and add landscaping. To the right is -- are you in a hurry?[643.91][643.94](laughing). Yeah, I am too. No, go ahead.
To the right is? Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's keep moving. I'm okay with this. If they're good, I'm good. Well, you can see we're already working with the contractors to try to, you know, price this out. Now, take it -- I want you to understand, we're not taking for granted your approval. We're going to build this no matter where we build it. We just think that where we've located it is the best location. We are going to build this monument. We prefer to build it right here on the axis of Taylor Street. Go ahead. That's a good example of how these benches will look. Go ahead. This is a good example of the stone. Go ahead. Good example of the way we're going to interpret the history, although our interpretive pieces of granite will be about two and a half times this size. Go ahead. That's it. How was that for speed?
Absolutely fabulous.
I'll be glad to take any questions. I just want to applaud people that are back there.
Thank you for coming so much.
I think I introduced everybody. We put a lot of work into this. The Anthon family has put in $250,000 to this project. Downtown Fort Worth Inc. has put in $200,000 to the project. The Water District will cover probably the rest of it. We're not asking you for any money. We're just asking you to put this on a piece of land that you own that I don't think you'll be able to use. And with that, I'll turn it back to you. Did I miss something, Doug or anybody?
James? James?
Yeah.
James? Just a letter on this from Vic.
Oh, yes, we have a letter. We have a letter of endorsement from the Water District from Vic Henderson. He's the chairman. He's sitting right over here.
Oh, good.
We have a letter from Jim Lane. This is actually a -- yeah, great. That's actually a mock-up of the major himself, done by our artist.
Very nice.
That's very nice. Thank you, thank you. That looks great.
Very nice. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Good-looking guy.
If you want to go up to Missouri, you can actually see the full mock-up, but I actually know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I felt like I was rushed. I do want to say something.
Sure.
Some people think, "Well, golly gee, we had a fort here. Did we engage in -- did we engage in raids of Native Americans?" No, actually, we didn't. Ripley Arnold is very well-known as a peacekeeper. And so, for the four years that the fort was there, what we did, or what they did, was keep the peace. There were no -- the infantrymen at the fort never assassinated a Native American, nor did they assassinate a -- it was very amazing. It was very much a matter of keeping the peace of the frontier. I think that's very important to remember. And the schedule on this, on June 6th of this year, or, yeah, this year, we will have what we call a ground blessing, which will be by a Native American, actually a former student of yours.
Former TCC, yeah.
Yeah.
Faculty, former faculty as well. Eddie Sandoval.
Which will, you know, begin the process, and then on June 6th of next year, 214, will unveil the monument. And if you approve this, all of you will be very notable in our ceremony. If you don't, you won't be invited.[900.81][900.84](laughing).
Like it.
That was just a joke.
All right, there it is. There we go. That's the deal.
That was just a joke.
Of course it was.
Well, if we're not invited, we're coming anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. This is wonderful.
What kind of traffic do you anticipate at the?
I actually am -- I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised. I don't know if you've realized it, but thanks to J.D. and Shanna and the support of Vic and Jim, we've actually been programming a lot of activities down there over the last, really, two years.
Oh, yeah.
Musical events, things that, you know, are past our generation, but they're very -- we brought a lot of young people. Your students, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Your students, I think. By the way, when I go down there, and I've been down there a lot lately, because I'm trying to specifically location, you have a lot of students that will, because their classes are not always back-to-back, they will wander out of the campus and come down and walk along the river. Or they will run on the river, you know, after their classes. So, the River Green Belt is becoming increasingly important. So, what kind of visitation? I think it'll be substantial. I think you'll have historic groups. I think you'll have buses that come through there with the tour groups, school buses, and all kinds of things. Part of what we're going to try to do over the next two years is put a website up that thanks to Clara and Bob and Doug, we've really gathered a lot of Texas history related to Fort Worth that was not uncovered before. They've actually been to the many places to get that. So, I think you'll see a lot of visitation.
With this kind of visitation, and I'll ask our attorney, what kind of liability will the college have, if any, with that number of people?
It'll still be our property, and we'll still enjoy all the immunities we currently enjoy.
Well, also, it's also be insured and so forth.
Angela, well, it kind of goes to the same question, although I think it's an exquisite statue, and I think we'd be honored to have it on our campus footprint. My question would be towards security and pranks, perhaps him wearing other school colors or hats of a kind or so forth like that. Are we responsible for that, or will you have some oversight to that?
No, I'm remiss in not having said this. We would sign -- Ms. Petty and I have talked about a memorandum of understanding, where we would maintain it, keep it up, conserve it, because art has to be conserved. So, you would have no responsibility as relates to any of that. I think we're also happy to help with surveillance. We would ask you, because you do provide security on your campus anyway, we would simply ask you, if you don't mind, to maybe be a little more, give it a little more diligence to looking down at the statue to make sure that, you know, that it's not vandalized or something like that.
Will he be lit 24/7 or just?
Pardon me?
Will he be dark at night, or will it be?
Actually, there's quite a bit of light there on that, already on that cul-de-sac. At a future date, and I cut a lot of my presentations short knowing your agenda, we will have what we call the River Road that comes through. When we build, with your cooperation, we will build a River Road, which will greatly increase the value of your property, by the way. And on that, when we do that, then we will increase the lighting in that area. J.D., you want to say something to that?
I just mentioned a couple of things. On the lighting, if you look around the base, we are planning lighting around the base, so we'll be illuminated at night. But on top of that, the area is very well-secured. Y'all do a fantastic job. But as far as immunity or the best way to put the college in a good spot, we look forward to working with your legal team. Over the next year, if an easement or something like that is needed to put you in the best position, we'll be happy to do that.
The memo is very specific for the requested action at the very end, where we would -- we're being asked to grant approval for the district and the Water District to develop a memorandum of understanding for the construction of the monument as well as the plaza. I would like to add, for our consideration in the next sentence, that the Water District and TRVA will provide maintenance, art conservation, programming, and security, which I would intend to include liability for any accidents or damages. And I would hope that our legal counselor, whoever prepares this MOU, would keep that in mind and that it become a part of the record of our action tonight. And with that, I would move approval.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to -- on Ms. Appleman's motion. Any discussion?
I think it's a fabulous project, Mr. President. I really do.
So do I. I think it's a marvelous project. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you, J.D.
May I take this opportunity, Vic and J.D. and all the rest of you, for coming to our wonderful board meeting? Were you here early enough to hear the budget presentation? Very good. Every time I get -- every time I get outstanding citizens to come to my board meeting, I like for them to hear all kinds of things about us. If you could wait another 10 minutes, you'll probably hear something else that you really like. We have a presentation coming up next. I think that's right. Well, yeah, you need to hear this. We have a presentation from our foundation. We're very, very pleased that the board has approved this project, and we think it will also add value. I did have one question handed to our board members. Where's the closest restroom going to be?
Where's what?
The closest restroom.
Actually, we're building a new pavilion down there right now.
Actually, we have a restroom approximately 200 feet from there, further down by the water, which was built last year. We also have power down there, so we can actually go and light up the area so it'll be safe for your students and people who visit.
Very good, very good.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. If you can't stay and hear this next presentation, we understand.
You should give them a plug for your next event.
Thank y'all very much for listening to James.[1322.81][1322.84](laughing).
Well, thank all of you. Thank you, Nina.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for coming. Next on the agenda is item number six, consideration of the Tarrant County Foundation proposal for capital campaign to assist the Northeast Campus Visual Arts Performing Learning Center.
Very good. Mr. President, board members, we are very pleased to present tonight to of our distinguished citizens of Fort Worth and Tarrant County, the chairman, the president, I guess, of our board, Tarrant County College Foundation Board, Mr. Bob Bender, along with the chair of the Resource Committee, none other than David Parker. So, welcome to both of you. We're very pleased for you to bring us the great news tonight, so. Dr. Joe McIntosh is also back there. Joe, would you like to introduce this, or have I said enough?
Segue to our.
Segue to our good chairman, Mr. Bender.
Thank you, Chancellor. President Greenhill, Chancellor Hadley, and members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for giving us some of your special time tonight, and thank you very much for your leadership and service to our institution, our community. We greatly appreciate it. We wanted to present to you this evening a project that we're considering. And before we move forward with any great expenditure of efforts relative to exploring the feasibility of this project, we really wanted to hear and understand from you if this direction for us, which is a new one and an expansion of our aspirations in support of the college district, is in alignment with your vision for us. We're not asking for any official action this evening, but we wanted to share with you an aspiration that we have and get your affirmation for our moving forward in more specific detail. As many of you, I think, know, we had a planning retreat to really look at long and short-term strategic planning initiatives in January of this year out at the Northwest Campus Fire Training Center. Was a great insight for us about one of the programs at the college at the same time that really gave us most of a full day of working together, imagining where we can go as a foundation. As you know, we've been focused primarily on the development of scholarship funds and the management of funds intended for scholarship use within the college. We've, over the last few years, consolidated a number of those funds from different resources. And the corpus of that fund now for scholarship has reached the neighborhood of $15 million. So, scholarship generation is a primary focus for us and will continue to be so. However, one of the things that we asked ourselves at our retreat was, what is the next significant step that the foundation can take to help assist in the critical support of the college? And from that discussion, we identified the fact that we think that we can take on other needs of the college and find ways to underwrite them through philanthropic support. The scholarship fund, as I said, is sacrosanct, but we do believe that we have the potential for pursuing other needs of the college. And what, in a subsequent meeting that David chaired of our Resources Committee, we looked at a wide range of requests and needs that the college is currently unable to fund that have been brought to us for possible support. And as you can imagine, given the breadth of the college's operations, they're very diverse in size and in nature. And in trying to envision where we can make them have the biggest impact for the college, we reviewed that wide range of requests and settled on one that we believe could be a significant next step in the foundation's growth and evolution. We're trying to be realistic about our aspirations in that regard. So, where there were myriad projects, we've really picked out one that we feel could significantly assist the college in growing its programs. The Northeast Campus Performing and Visual Arts Learning Center that's been proposed, that we understand you all have considered favorably, but it's not, given current funding restraints, been a project that you could move forward with. The Foundation Board believes that it's appropriate for us to consider putting together a program to pursue a campaign to underwrite that project. And we believe that this is not a simple process. It's a challenging one. We would propose to approach in a very systematic, disciplined, and professional fundraising way. But before we expend any effort in the planning of that and moving forward with developing a game plan that would lead to success, we want to make sure that we have your support and approval in moving in that direction, because it's a substantial growth in our aspirations. It's going to take additional resources. It's going to take additional planning. We'll do that very diligently. But before we start even planning that process, we'd like to hear from you that you believe this is an appropriate direction for the foundation to pursue. We're talking about exploring the feasibility of it. No promises at this point in time. We need to do a very disciplined and detailed and rigorous process of developing a plan for success. But before we do that, we'd like to hear from the board that this is an appropriate effort for us to embark upon. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Colleagues?
Yes.
Do you have an idea, excuse me, do you have an idea of how much money you would raise, you would seek to raise?
Well, our plan would be to fully underwrite the need to develop the facility.
Do you have an idea what that number is?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, because we're, I think, we have, we're in question as to what the number would be.
Well, and the board might be reminded that there are some TIF funds to help us get started.
Yeah, we have $8 million in TIF funds.
Yeah, say that into the microphone.
No, I was looking at the upper end of, you know, we don't know exactly, I don't think, what we would build as a wide range of.
But, Mr. Heath, did you hear him say that they're going to fully underwrite?
I understand. I'd just like to get an idea of what that number might be.
But it doesn't matter.
But it doesn't matter if he's going to fully underwrite it.
It does matter.
Okay, but, all right. It matters, but I'm in favor of you getting to it.
And, Mr. Heed, to give you some specificity to that, we understand what some of the conceptual budget from the early design plans were. So, from an order of magnitude standpoint, we believe it's realistic for us to put together a plan to achieve that level of funding. We understand the availability of the TIF funds. There are a number of elements of this project, including your favorable consensus for its need, the range of magnitude of the dollars that are involved, the availability of the TIF funds, which otherwise are sitting dormant, and some elements of the aesthetic of the project and where it would be located, the community surrounding it, that we think are predictors of our potential success. And that, all those things were part of our discussion, not only in the committee meeting that David led, but also then in a full board meeting where the full board has said that we're enthusiastic about pursuing this and provided that the trustees affirm our interest in going forward.
So, you do anticipate doing a feasibility study and that kind of thing?
That's correct.
A lot of that's already been done, well, not already been done, but-
Yeah, you're right.
Well, yeah, okay. There've been a lot of action taken by Dr. Darlage's actions to see if they need it. And what do you anticipate? There will be student, there will be classes there as well, of course. And there's, you had, I think, a presentation in one of our-
That's our presentation.
Oh, that's our presentation? Okay. Oh, there it is up there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's ours.
Mr. Greenhill, this proposal is to explore the feasibility of a campaign.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, we understand.
We want to be very specific about what it is we're approving. It's the feasibility of a campaign to raise the funds. Nothing more at this point. But folded into that, obviously, would be a study of the physical spaces that have already been somewhat designed but shelved, given the constraints of the budget, so.
And, of course, I've got a question. Is this pretty much a standard for college foundations to kind of delve into this type of situation?
We believe it is. And we, when we look at our best practices across the industry, across the institutional waterfront, we believe that this level of engagement and fundraising on our behalf is one of the steps that we need to be able to take to keep pace with the institution's aspirations in terms of being a leader within the community, college community.
Mrs. Winnet, that is generally the way institutions build buildings when they don't have money, is through their foundation.
Right.
You look at all the work that's been done at TCU. It's primarily the foundation that goes through. Look at what's being done at J.P.S. Hospital. Foundation does it. So, it's the foundation, in many instances, foundation-led. When you start doing capital campaigns, institutions can't really do capital campaigns, really. It's the foundations that do that for us. And I want to also think, and Nina, you may want to come to the microphone, I don't know, but there's been a lot of work done on that feasibility of that. You all paid a number of dollars to get a really good look at the feasibility of building it, what it would look like, what kind of courses would be taught there. So, we do have all of that work done, Mr. Heed, really. Now, whether or not, as we go through this process, we all agree that there is a need to tweak it some kind of way, and that's likely to happen. But, for instance, we have built into that right now, I believe, two different theaters, one large one and one small one, like for classroom rehearsals or class rehearsals and those kinds of things, in addition to a number of classrooms to house arts, technical programs, I should say, technical art programs. So, all of that's pretty much been planned.
Yeah, and we know that that's a big part of what happens at Northeast Campus as well.
Right, absolutely.
And I, for one, am excited about the foundation reaching out and doing this. I think it's excellent.
Yeah, I have-
Go right ahead.
Are we going in a row or?
Nope, nope.
Okay. I serve on the Foundation Board as a liaison to this body. However, I was not at the last meeting, and so this came to be a great surprise and a good one because I'm thinking, we need all the help we can get. And to open up the door to not only the energy that the foundation has to do something this grandiose for Tarrant County College, we're honored. And I know what it takes to fundraise. And I know that many people, some prefer the scholarships, some prefer bricks and mortars, and there's an incredible opportunity here. And so, you know, I applaud you. I think you're moving forward with the momentum from the breakout session or the retreat we had, which was just outstanding, when you see these community leaders willing to spend their very little discretionary time serving this college in this manner. We have a lot of opportunities, specifically with the Performing Arts Visual and Learning Center, because we do have some funds already. We do know that there's a need there. It's been on the books since, what, 1999? And going forward with that need and our strategic plan, the vision 2015 with this college, we have a mechanism to assist you with that need and where it stands with our priorities, which I think is pretty high. But this mechanism, which is the Institutional Planning Committee, is in its infancy, and we're working through that. So, I think we have some mechanisms there to not only assist you, but also reaffirm to the district as a whole that this is worth doing. And that's something, that's a measure that we need to take. And like I say, we're opening this conversation. I think it's a great one, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, and I agree. But again, I hope that the focus, the focus of the foundation was for scholarships. I hope that that never leaves, that that remains our primary focus. Sure, buildings are wonderful, but I know that our students need money for school, and we need to make sure that that's what we're tapping into. Everything else is fine, but again, we need to, again, we need to stick with what the money was there for originally.
Absolutely.
So, if there's that much money left over, how well are we doing on dispensing our scholarships? I mean, that's the question that I've always asked. So, again, it was there for that reason. That's where I would like to see our focus. But, again, this is fine, too. But, again, I don't want us to forget what the money's there for.
Thank you. We hear you. And as I've said, we are very clear about our primary mission. We believe that we've developed a scalable ability in generating scholarship funds, and we're going to maintain that. We don't see this project as one that we would do with existing staff and in that way take away from our success on the scholarship side. We really think this is an addition to our capabilities. We want to take on this one project and do it right and develop that capability to be successful in the area of capital campaigns for facilities, like we've already done in scholarships, and then pursue further opportunities on behalf of the college district once we've proven ourselves in that regard. So, we hear you.
Any other questions or comments? I think it seems to me that we're pretty much in agreement and have a consensus that you should move forward, you know, pretty much in the way that Ms. Appleman has expressed. And I don't think we need to take any official action.
No, I, I think we probably need to sort of formally endorse the idea. I think, by the way, this sort of marks a sort of growing up of the foundation, that it marks the foundation as basically a new major player in Tarrant County. I predict that you'll be able, with this project, to get other foundations and nonprofits to participate with you. I'm hoping somewhere along the line. I think that funding all of it is a little ambitious, and I hope that you can do that. But I'm hoping that if you get close, that we can see our way through to doing some matching funds in that process as well. And, by the way, I think the magic number is around mid-30s, and I don't mean thousands, but for it. So, you got an $8 million head start. So, I commend you, and I think maybe it's really a very clear sign, again, that the foundation has arrived and elevated itself to a higher plane. And I thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Ms. Appleman, you had a pretty good motion going there for a while.
Well, I would move that this board endorse, support, and encourage the Foundation Board in their proposal to explore the feasibility of a financial campaign for the Northeast Campus Visual and Performing Arts Learning Center.
I'll second that.
There's a second. Mr. Heed, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None? Thank you.
Thank you for your confidence.
David, did you have anything you want to add? You look like you're just bursting at the seams to say something.
I think the only thing I would add is whether it's $30,000 or $30 million, unlock the folks that went before me, y'all would all be invited, no matter what. Whether it be programmatic or brick and mortar, whatever, you will all be invited. I want to assure you of that. That's all. Thank you.
That's a real fundraiser. Thank you all so much. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Next item is item number seven, Presentation of Student XS and Success in Administrative Programs and Projects.
Mr. President and board members, standing in for Dr. Larry Darlage tonight is Dr. Jackie Washington, who is our Vice President for Continuing Education Services. And she has our report from the Northeast Campus. Dr. Washington.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Madam Chancellor. I would like to say, on behalf of Dr. Larry Darlage, we're excited to tell you about the wonderful things that are going on at the Northeast Campus. One of the things I'd like to start off with briefly is to let you know, Northeast Campus is really excited about the center we opened at Halton City. Well, I want you to know, we've done it again. I have with me here tonight Ms. Lisa Harper Wood from the city of Richland Hills, who we are now in partnership with. And we're now going to have a center hopefully in the city of Richland Hills. And so, I have with me Ms. Lisa Harper Wood, who is Director of Library Service at Richland Hills. And so, Dr. Darlage wanted me to recognize them tonight and let the board know that Northeast Campus is doing it again in our community.
I'd just like to briefly say that we've had our GED classes going in the library for four weeks now. And we've had some breakdowns, but some great successes. And so, I was walking out of the building last night, I heard this very loud, passionate speech being given by one of our students. And I looked in, and I could see a lot of learning going on. And for the demographics in our community, this is going to be a fabulous partnership, and we're very excited about it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, for the program we want to highlight at Northeast Campus, it is our Pathways Program. We serve all types of students at Tarrant County College. And this particular program serves students with very special needs. They're either mentally or physically challenged. And we've had this program on Northeast Campus almost 15 years, and we're doing wonderful things. And with that, I'm going to bring up Ms. Jan Miller, who's the Director of our program, and she's going to introduce this program to us today.
Chancellor Hadley, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to tell you about our Transitional Skills Program on the Northeast Campus that serves to empower the individuals with developmental challenges. I'm going to give you an overview of our programs and then show a short video, followed by a brief presentation by Catherine Albertini, one of our students. On the Northeast Campus, we refer to the Transitional Skills Program as Pathways and Enrichment. That means we have two programs. Our goal is to empower our students by providing a realistic and meaningful program that will equip them with the skills necessary to move from dependence to a greater sense of independence and personal accomplishments. To accomplish this goal, we have to understand who our students are, how they learn, and the most effective and efficient way to provide the tools necessary for our students to be successful in their academic programs and in their daily lives. The math and reading skills of each student are assessed prior to entering any of our programs. Students whose math skills are below third grade, we are directed to the enrichment program. Students whose reading and math levels are above third grade or third grade and above, they are directed to our Pathways Program. Our Pathways Program addresses a variety of critical skills that are necessary to empower our students with developmental and intellectual challenges. Such skills that we address are communication, math, job readiness, computer, life, interpersonal, and physical education. The Pathways Program has two levels, Tier One and Tier Two. All students enter the Tier One program. The students who have mastered the Tier One program and have been in it for a year and who have demonstrated the skills, the ability, and the willingness to move toward a greater sense of responsibility and accomplishments will go into the Tier Two program. Our students come to us lacking the skills, the knowledge, necessary to enter college. But soon, we realize that most of our students demonstrate an eagerness and a desire to succeed and a pride in the knowledge that they are attending college. We attribute this to our curriculum that integrates our students into the college community and provides the environment that allows our students to experience a realistic and meaningful education. Here are some of the examples, how we do this. All of our students are offered basic computer skills. Over time, we have come to realize that our students have more ability and can accomplish more than, much more than what we believed. We experimented with offering our students some of the same technology courses from our Office Careers Program, with the same requirements, not changing anything, and the same conditions for our general ed students. Many of our students did well. Our student learning styles and abilities are so varied that in order for them to be successful in their learning experiences, we must be willing to access all avenues and many avenues. With this in mind, we have forged relationships between the business community and the college community. Both of these communities provide opportunities and support to our students to reinforce their classroom experiences. For example, we conduct mock interviews with all our students, and one is happening on this Monday, coming on the 22nd. On the day of interviews, students come with well-prepared resumes and appropriately dressed to be interviewed by volunteers from our business community and our career department. Students are interviewed, they are videotaped, and then they are given the opportunity to view that tape with a volunteer. Feedback is then provided to both the student and to the instructors. With the help of the business community, we conduct virtual experiences to help reinforce and assess such skills as communication, job readiness, and money management. For example, a store like Kroger Signature Stores will come in and set up a mini version of a grocery store on our campus. Pathway students will function as the managers, the employees, and the customers. And members from the surrounding community and the college also play a vital role in that. Ten departments from our college community also provide job volunteer sites and supervision for our Tier Two students. We, the staff, secure all the job sites, and we maintain the relationships. But all students, each student in that program, must secure the position themselves. In other words, we have, we do not give the student the job. We'll say, here's the job. Two or three of them will interview for the same position as if in the real world out there, and only one of them will get that position. Most of our students are involved in the student clubs, student club called PALS. The meaning of this is preparing advocates for leadership and support. The club focuses again on leadership and social skills. The officers campaign and do a very good job and are elected by their peers. The club completes a service project each semester. The club- The club completes a service project each semester, and the club members get to interact with the other clubs on the campus. Over the years, we have seen many of our students learn to verbalize their feelings and goals, and to advocate for themselves. Several of our students are maintaining their employment and are able to advocate for promotions. Several have their own apartments and have driver's license, and also cars. Not drive, only drive their mom's car, they're driving their own cars. One of our students has his own business. One of our students graduated with his associate's degree from TCC two years ago. We have two students who are presently pursuing their associate's degree, one on the Northeast Campus and one on the Northwest Campus. In developing and implementing the Transitional Skills Program that serves to empower our students with intellectual challenges, we embrace what TCC says, access and success. We are keenly aware that to help our students to achieve their dreams, we must provide both the opportunity to experience a meaningful college education and the skills necessary to be successful beyond this program, in their community and in their adult lives. Now, you can ask me any question, and then we'll show a short video. Okay? The video first.
Okay.
Thank you. I think I could have talked on and on about the program, but I was advised, make it short, and hopefully it gave you an oversight of what we do. With that, I will bring up Catherine Albertini, one of our students in the Pathways Program.
Sure.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Catherine Albertini, and I want to thank you for inviting me to speak to you this evening. I have been given quite a few opportunities to speak in the past few years. I was an ambassador for Best Buddies and spoke at fundraisers for them. I am also a fairly new global messenger for Special Olympics. In that role, I have spoken to a Rotary Club, a PTO, a Boy Service Organization, now that was fun.
She's cute.
And even to the Women's Prison at Carswell. That's pretty good for a kid, who didn't even talk until she was almost two and a half. I was born with cerebral palsy, which also includes intellectual disability. My mother used to pray that I would be able to talk. She now says, be careful what you pray for, because now it's hard to keep me quiet. I am a 2006 graduate of Carroll Senior High School. I participated in a lot of activities, such as choir several Special Olympics sports and Best Buddies. I stayed in the Transition Program until 2010, and have worked in a dentist's office, Walgreens, and am currently the coffee hostess at 7-Eleven Store in South Lake. When I was in high school and started thinking about college, my mom said, not everybody goes to college. Then she found out about the Pathways Program at TCC. Because of it, I have been able to have a college experience. I have attended TCC for almost three years now. I have been able to continue my education, which I'm sure all of you would agree is very important. I have met new people and learned new things. We do math, computer skills, work on interpersonal relationships, and job skills. I am also involved in PALS, which, in case you don't know, is a service and social organization for Pathway students. I have served as an officer every year, first as Vice President, then as President, and now as Sergeant-at-Arms as an officer. I have had the opportunities to run meetings, speak at several engagements, and expand my leadership skills. These experiences gave me the confidence to become a global messenger for Special Olympics. Through Special Olympics, I have learned that if you set your goals and work hard enough, you can achieve amazing things. I hope to make it to Tier Two next year, the Pathways Program. Mrs. Miller runs a tight ship. She sets a lot out of Tier Two students, but I think I can do it. Thank you for making it possible for me to achieve some of my goals through Tarrant County College.
Point of order here.
One second.
She's a Sergeant-at-Arms.
I gotta, I gotta. Does anyone have a question that I might be able to answer?
I'd like to say, Catherine, a few months ago, we had a program at the Grapevine Rotary Club on Special Olympics. And you spoke to us, you stole the program, and you stole our hearts.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Thank you. Thank you so much, Catherine. We're glad to have you as one of our students. Congratulations on all your accomplishments.
On behalf of Dr. Darlich and Northeast Campus, that concludes our presentation. Unless you have any questions of myself, Ms. Jan, Catherine's mother, we'd like to recognize, who has been a big supporter of our program. Please thank. She is the reason Catherine does so well in our program.
Stand up, mother, so we can see you back there. Congratulations.
Do you ever have a graduation program? I mean...
We do, at the end of every semester. May seventh.
Invite us, be sure and send it out. Please send it out.
Yes.
Okay.
Is it premature to talk, you talk about GED at North Richland Hills, is it premature to talk about Grapevine?
It is. It's Richland Hills.
Richland Hills, that's what I meant.
Yes. Grapevine is in the works. Hopefully next month, I'll be back and tell you about Grapevine.
Okay. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Washington, and Ms. Miller. We appreciate you.
Next on the agenda is item seven B, which is the NHA Charter School update.
Mr. Greenhill and Board Members, we have all kinds of good news tonight.
Oh, this is a really good project.
Yes, I'm gonna call for Dr. Peter Jordan to give us an update on where we are with our National Heritage Academies Charter School application. Dr. Jordan?
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, members of the board. It's my pleasure to come before you again. You'll recall that the last time we came to you about the Charter School, it was last September. Since then, we've done a good deal of work, and we want to share some of that with you. But mostly, we want to let you know that we're still engaged with our partner, the National Heritage Academies. And so I'm gonna ask our partners, representatives who are here with us, to come join me up here, and I'll introduce them in a few minutes. But in terms of update, by providing you with an update, since we last spoke, we've developed a project plan with the help of Mike Eek, or Lean Sigma Guru. He has helped us create a very extensive and detailed project plan that guides our work. We have already drafted a charter application, we're on version three, I think it is, of that application, which we expect will be submitted to TEA before the summer starts. We've also initiated an engagement with the community, including representation from Fort Worth ISD. In addition, we conduct monthly meetings with the Development Committee that is doing most of the work at this point to move and guide the multiple activities of this project. In fact, yesterday, most of yesterday, and this morning, we spent with that committee working through issues around the application, as well as some other issues related to the plan. One of the exciting things that we did last month was to have a meeting with members of the State Board of Education. Chancellor Hadley, Vice Chancellor Gates, and myself met with Patricia Hardy and Mavis Knight to share the vision that we have for the Charter School and our partnership with NHA. We shared the project plan with them, and they were both quite impressed by the detailed level of that plan. They were also impressed by the innovative campus-based model that we presented, which is something that the school board, Texas School Board, is very interested in exploring different models for charter schools. And they were also pleased by the public-private partnership on which we have embarked. And so with that, I want to invite again to speak to you on behalf of National Heritage Academies, the Director of New Charter School Development, Megan DeCracker. Now, Megan is filling in for Nick Paradiso, who is the Vice President of Government Relations and Partner Services, who was grounded this morning, not by his family, but by airlines because of really bad traffic. He was not able to get out of Grand Rapids, Michigan, and so we have with us Megan, who will complete the rest of this presentation. Before that, though, I want to introduce to you the NHA Director of Real Estate, someone who has become a fast friend of Kirby Chadwell, seemed to be a fast friend of Nina Petty as well, Mr. Jeff Chamberlain. Jeff? Yes. And so with that, I'll turn this podium over to Megan after review of sixty-second video.
To ensure student success, we have to have a plan in place before the students enter into our doorway.
National Heritage Academies ranks in the top twenty percent of U.S. schools for academic growth.
I'm learning a lot.
They are truly invested in their kids.
On average, our students' academic growth rate is one hundred forty-six percent.
We want you to have academic success, but we want you to have emotional success.
They teach me to be a good person.
My children feel very safe, not only from a physical perspective, but from an overall learning environment.
That's why ninety-two percent of our parents recommend us.
We are in the business of producing excellent human beings. That's our legacy to the world.
Well, thank you so much for having me here again. I'm a poor substitute for Nick, but grateful to be with you again and talk just a little bit more about National Heritage Academies and our hopes and dreams for our partnership with TCC. I have to tell you, I learned this morning about one of your new initiatives, which is TCC and Me. And I've been driving around, looking at billboards, and I've seen billboards with pictures, and I keep thinking, you know, I can't wait for the day that a student starts in kindergarten at a charter school, and they become TCC and Me by finishing and going the whole way through. And so, just so, so excited about, you know, the opportunities that this partnership presents for students and families and the entire community. Quick facts about us, we were founded in nineteen ninety-five with one school, seventy-four schools now in nine states, based on four pillars, academic excellence with a huge focus on college readiness, student responsibility... So, really, really excited. I think the next slide just talks a little bit about our timeline. So, right now, as Dr. Jordan said, we have version three of the charter application. We're continuing to work on that application and making sure it paints the picture of exactly what we're hoping and dreaming for, and also conducting community outreach. And Dr. Jordan and the team at South Campus have been great about reaching out to so many different individuals throughout the community. This summer, we're scheduled to submit the charter application to the Texas Educational Agency, and we'll look forward to them scheduling an interview to hear more about the application and our hopes and dreams. In this fall, we'll begin the building permitting and construction process, making sure that we're designing a building that's beautiful, works well for kids, keeps kids safe, and is a great addition to the campus. And then, we're looking forward in the fall of 2014 to open. We'll open the school with kindergarten through fifth grade, and each year add a grade until it's a kindergarten-through-eighth-grade school, probably about 400 kids when we open, and hoping to serve 750 kids in a few years, once the school is at full enrollment. So, thank you so much again for the time, and would welcome any questions that you might have for me or for Dr. Jordan.
Any questions?
Keep on keeping on.
Keep on keeping on.
Could you tell us a little more about where exactly the school will be located, and who builds it, and pays for it, and...
Sure, sure, Dr. Jordan. Yes, Dr. Jordan. Okay. Perfect. I'll tell you who builds it. So, National Heritage Academies, that's part of our commitment, and one of the things we bring to the table is the capital to invest and build the building. Our typical construction process is 16 to 20 weeks, and from that time, we'll go from flat land to the entire building being up there, so four to five months, and that's at no cost to the college. That's all costs that will be borne by NHA, so we'll work with the local construction firm to get that up and running.
Dr. Morris, Dr., Ms. Appleman, I'm sorry. Based on the plans that we have at this point, the site that we have located is near the intersection of C.A. Robertson and...
Jolby Rushing campus.
No. Oh, Jolby Rushing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
To the east of your campus.
Yes, it would be at the east. It would be at the northeast end of the campus.
You mentioned the Fort Worth ISD. What is the relationship there with them?
Well, we have had a meeting with the Superintendent, Mr. Dansby, to talk about the fact that we will be launching the charter school, and to ask his engagement and naming of a representative to work with our Development Committee. He has identified Dr. Kayla, who used to be Chair of the School Board and Provost of TCU, to work with us or be his proxy or representative to Fort Worth ISD.
The only question I have is, how do you get that built in six months? That's incredible.
That's the magic that Jeff and his team will do. And like I told Kirby, he's going to get very sick of having to come to meetings with me soon, because we'll move quickly and get it. We'll take time-lapse photos, so everybody can see day by day how it goes.
One of the other things you might want to mention, Dr. Jordan, is the cooperative agreement we've already, to which we've already agreed about our use of the facility when National Heritage Academy is not using it, or our student use, especially for childcare.
Absolutely. We have been in discussions about the use of the facility and also the use of the campus by students within the school and teachers. And the idea is that we would, our students, who are in our teacher education program, will be able to serve as teacher aides within the school, or students can serve as tutors within the school. During after-school and summer programs, like our College for Kids program, may be offered through the school and be active in the school building. And as far as the kinds of resources that students will have access to, they include access to the library, access to the gym and swimming pool and so forth, of course, all supervised by their teachers. So, we have been working on a truly collaborative kind of arrangement that allows for students to take advantage of the school, the campus, but for the campus to also take advantage of those facilities. It is also entirely possible that we may be able to offer some after-school programs that may be of help to our students who have children who are now not able to go to college because they don't have affordable, safe educational childcare.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. It's an exciting program.
Thanks, Megan and John. We appreciate having both of you here.
Thank you for coming from Michigan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan.
We're going to go off the schedule just a little bit, agenda just a little bit. I missed Stephen Williams, who wanted to make a three-minute comments. And so, Mr. Williams didn't hear me when I called him the first time, so please come up. You have three minutes.
I'm sorry for not hearing you earlier there. I was kind of coming in a little late from work. My name is Stephen. I'm actually here to talk about Derica Steele. I recently found out that he might be leaving TCC. He's actually been a very great teacher this year. With him helping through the semester, the semester has had a lot of things going on. He's been able to help me go over class notes that I have missed, his superior teaching techniques, I mean, through his class lectures, he just, he has such enthusiasm about his government. And, you know, he's definitely have gone through, and sorry, I'm not good at public speaking here, but his enthusiasm for his lectures that he does, he doesn't use any PowerPoints. That's one thing I've noticed about TCC when I've come back. A lot of these teachers, they just put up these PowerPoints. Well, he doesn't use that. He actually lectures and discusses what is in his notes, in the book. And with not using PowerPoints, you actually have to write it down. So, you learn something. This is one of the classes this semester I've actually learned something, instead of just, oh, you see this, you see this, and you look at it again later on. But unless you're listening and writing down, you're actually learning something. He's been a, you know, great teacher. I would just like to announce that to y'all, and would like to see him back next year, so I can have him as my history teachers, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item eight, which is the Consent Agenda: Consideration and Approval of Proposed Policy Changes to DEA Local, which is in your package, trustees. Do I have any discussion or desire to withdraw this from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would propose, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Committee reports is item number 10, Audit and Finance Committee. I think Ms. Appleman has put in our package a report of certain collections. Governance Committee, we don't have any...
Excuse me, Mr. Greenhill.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
In addition to the Linebarger Report for March, you have a revised schedule of the Audit and Finance Committee meetings and agenda items, and we will report back again next month.
Thank you. Governance Committee, I don't have anything. Institutional Planning Committee, you've been busy.
Yes.
Yes, you have.
Yes, I do have some information I'd like to share with you all in regards to our meeting that we had last Friday, in addition to consideration of some action as a result of our committee meeting. So, the Institutional Planning Committee met last Friday after our Governance Committee. We really tackled three different issues. The first, we had Chancellor speak to us in regards to where the district was on their priorities with individual campus needs and requests moving forward for the budget. And as you recall, we have 14 institutional planning priorities, and Angela does have copies of those for you. I know you probably have them at home, but this is a really nice preparation to look at those. But going back to conversations we've had with the Innovation Forum, we're using this tool as a way to identify opportunities that this committee may have. So, where we are with the Chancellor's conversation was campuses are now looking at all their requests for the budget going forward, and we'll soon know how those fall with the Innovation Forum, which I think is a great mechanism to level all the needs and requests that we have. That was a great conversation, which led to the conversation of the Financial Advisory Services, RFP, particularly because we've been charged to hire a financial advisory service. Our committee will be committed to not only looking at what the campuses request, but we also need the assistance of a financial advisory service manager to help us embrace the opportunities that may come our way with public-private ventures, or public-private ventures, whether it's on our own campus or district property, or something out of the box. This will give us a mechanism to discern those better. I'm trying to think, our last conversation, oh, in that same meeting, we just discussed timelines. I can say, we are really a work in progress. This is a new committee, and we're trying to, yeah, work through our roles and responsibilities. And I do think that having a financial advisor at the helm to kind of guide us, whether that's looking at our real estate portfolio, whether we are responding to requests that we get, say, from Alliance, or any of these projects that we have in front of us. I think the most important thing that we looked at in terms of the priorities, the 14 priorities that we've been looking at, if you look to Priority One, which is to implement a standardized institutional process for decision-making that reinforces transparency and accountability, we have that in the Innovation Forum, and so, we will use that tool. And as I spoke with Bob Bendt from the foundation, that could even be an opportunity to discern the performing arts opportunity, to better evaluate that need and everything going forward. Priority recommendation number nine, increase the academic capacity to accommodate overall demographic growth. Priority recommendation 10 is plan for future use of district real estate and campus real estate, as detailed in the recommendations. So, basically, our committee encapsulates all the priorities, but I'm just sharing that a few of these are clearly apropos to what we're doing. So, having said all that, I would ask that my committee members, Dr. Morrison or Mr. Heat, if you have anything to add in regards to the RFP or anything else, I do have one other thing. Mike Herndon, we grabbed him in the committee, and he did a terrific job, walking us through the RFP process, answering our questions. I can tell you from the information that you read in your packet, there is an evaluation percentages that we did alter from what we were presented, and we were given that latitude and great advice from Mike Herndon. So, he does a great job at what he does, and we're grateful that he took the time with us to go through the process. Gwen, Connor, do you have anything to...
No, I think you've done a very good job, Madam Chairman.
Good job, and I recommend approval.
It doesn't need a second. There's a motion to, what are we looking, we're going to approve the RFP?
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't need a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you, and I really appreciate, or we all appreciate what you all have been doing on this committee. It's something very brand-new. We all realize it's a work in progress, and we'll figure it out. But I think it's a marvelous process, and I hope that all of us, when we get opportunities given to us from outside vendors, that we'll refer them to the committee. That's what the plan is, is to refer these opportunities to the committee, to put it through the process, and to make sure there's a need, and it goes through the Dream Score. Okey-dokey. The next is number 12, Consideration and Approval Resolution Declaring Unopposed Candidates. This is good news. Mr. Carr, or Chancellor Hadley?
This is very good news. Absolutely. We are finished listening to all those things Mr. Carr has to talk about.[1610.11][1610.11](laughter)
We're finished with you, Mr. Carr.
We always welcome you when we need you, Tom, so...
You know, the chief just walked in, so be real careful here.
Well, Mr. Chairman and board members, we are very pleased to welcome back to the podium, Mr. Tom Carr, to give us the great news about our single-member district elections in Districts 2, 6, and 7. Tom?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, members of the board. It's, you know, it will be my last opportunity to visit with you, and I'm sad about that, but I'm also very happy that because of your strong leadership and your ability to hold on to your positions and stuff, you're saving the district anywhere from $40,000 to $120,000 by not having to go forward with this election. Tonight is the formal process whereby we will vote on an order canceling your election in all the three districts. This order will be voted on, signed, and then posted at all the polling locations, notifying the citizens that they won't be, they won't have to vote on the trustee election for the college district. Now, prior to this evening, you've received what we're going to call Certificates of Unopposed Status. Those documents were signed by your trustee secretary, Mr. Carter, and presented to you prior to this meeting, and I would ask that the minutes of this meeting reflect that they were, in fact, received and accepted by this body, and how you would like to do that. I don't think it's necessary that you necessarily have to read them, but I would like that the minutes reflect that they were actually received by each of you and accepted.
Yes, I would, as far as I'm concerned, that will go into the record.
Perfect. I think, just a formality, but that's a step that we have...
No, it's in the record. I ordered the secretary to put that into the record.
Perfect. The next thing that you have before you that I would move for its adoption is the Resolution and Order Declaring Unopposed Candidates Elected and Canceling Your Election for Single-member Districts 2, 6, and 7. And I made it a very short resolution that Mr. Carter will probably have to read.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
It's early yet. No one's really sleepy yet. I'm...
I ordered the secretary to put that into the record.
Perfect. The next thing that you have before you that I would move for its adoption is the resolution and order declaring unopposed candidates elected and canceling your election for single-member districts Two, Six, and Seven. And I made it a very short resolution that Mr. Carter will probably have to read.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
It's early yet, no one's really sleepy yet.
Speak for yourself.
I had five opponents, including two Tea Party guys, at the runoff, so I'm going to proceed with resentment as I read this. Whereas the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees has ordered trustee election to take place on May 11, 2013, for trustees to be elected from single-member districts Two, Six, and Seven, and whereas the Board of Trustees has pursuant to state law received a certification of unopposed status regarding single-member districts Two, Six, and Seven, which provises that those offices are unopposed, therefore being ordered by the Board of Trustees in the Tarrant County College District, one, that Conrad Heath, being the unopposed candidate for single-member district Number Two, is hereby declared elected to that office, and two, Wendellion Morrison, being the unopposed candidate for single-member district Number Six, is hereby declared elected to that office, and three, that Louise Appleman, being the unopposed candidate for single-member district Number Seven, is hereby declared elected to that office, and four, that the Tarrant County College District trustee election ordered for May 11, 2013, for single-member districts Numbers Two, Six, and Seven are hereby canceled, and five, that a copy of this order shall be posted on May 11, 2013, Election Day, at each polling place that have been used in the election. Be it further ordered that Conrad Heath, Wendellion Morrison, and Louise Appleman, the newly-elected trustees, shall be elected their certificates of election and take the oath of office as prescribed by law. I'd like to make that motion, Mr. President, but we need a second.
I'd like to second it vigorously.
Okay. Any observations, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations to the three of you. Let me add just a couple of things to this. Each of the three of you will be receiving either this evening or at the next meeting a statement of elected officer, and you may sign those documents. However, you will not receive your certificate of election, nor take your oath of office until after May 11, which is the election date. So, your June meeting, you will be officially newly-elected Board members, but congratulations to each of you, and good luck.
All right.
And I'll miss you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carr.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Our next, the next item on the agenda is Item Number 13, the Tarrant County College Police Department Annual Traffic Contact Report.
Traffic contact.
Traffic contact.
Yeah. Thank you. Ms. Angela Robinson will introduce this piece. Angela?
Senate Bill 1074 requires that a police department present its annual traffic contact report to its board annually, and so I have Chief Sean Williams will do that this evening.
Chancellor Hadley, President Greenhill, members of the Board, I would like to present the 2012 TCC Police Department Traffic Contact Report as required, as Mr. Robinson stated, by Senate Bill 1074. This report contains collected data used for the purpose of identifying and addressing, if necessary, any concern regarding racial profiling practices. And hopefully you should all have a copy of the report if you have any questions. Senator.
Any questions? I guess we do not. Do we, I need a motion to approve this report? Just for information? Oh, yeah, I see, I'm sorry, it's for information. Any question? Comments? I want to, first of all, I'd like to tell you how grateful we are for your good work, and you and your, and the Vice Chancellor, and you and your staff, and your police force in conducting the safety procedures for our students at the Southeast Campus. It was very well done. I was in New York when this happened, and I also appreciate the staff reporting all of this to us. Our lawyer gave us an email, and Rita sent some information out, but thank you, y'all did a great job.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Please take care, good care of Ripley Arnold, too, please.
Thank you, Chief. Due to the fact that the TIF matters were not ready for action by the Board of Trustees, Items 14 and 15 have been removed from the agenda. Our next item is consideration and approval.
Excuse me, Mr. President, will we be seeing those items next time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they apparently were not in order for us to consider them. We'll see them next time. Next item for consideration, consideration and approval of foreign trade zone FTZ, Maruyama U.S. Inc.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Trustees. To answer your question, Mr. Carter, yes, they will, we're looking at the June meeting. We have talked to both of them, and we will.
It's the time after.
I'm sorry?
Not the next meeting, but the time.
Yes, sir, and the reason why is because of the graduation. I was, I don't think that graduation would allow us because of due to the time, but the month of June, we've talked to both entities, and they're happy with that, and we look forward to having our good partners here for y'all to review. Anyways, we'd like to now talk about Maruyama. Maruyama is a manufacturer of handheld and agricultural equipment. The products are manufactured in Japan and distributed throughout Fort Worth, and we, they have been moving from Denton to Fort Worth. They're bringing a labor force of about 25 full-time employees. They're asking trustees to consider a letter of no objection, where the following entities have already done so. This is, the new law has changed whereby, before it was the city and the counties, now the Department of, is asking, of Commerce, is asking all the taxing entities to go ahead and give letters of no objection. The three, the following entities have already approved that, which was the Water District, the Tarrant County Eagle Mountain Independent School District, and the City of Fort Worth. Foreign trade zones are designated in locations in the U.S. where companies like Maruyama can use a special procedure that helps encourage U.S. activity and adds value in the competition with foreign alternatives. The purpose is to defer and reduce eliminations of duties, reduce import and expenses, manage inventory taxes, improve supply chain and repair errors. What we did is, Mr. Heath, I'm glad you asked that question, and we're always looking for new things. We actually went, I actually went and visited their premises, and it's an incredible operation. They bring all their products from Japan, and from there, from the holding point in Fort Worth, there's a little bit of extra manufacturing, and then it's sent out to South America, and it's sent out to other things. So we're actually really using a great place to use labor and move product in the United States. Now, what TCC will be foregoing is $400, but Maruyama decided that they wanted to help the college in this, so what they decided is that they're going to establish an internship program for four of our qualified students. They're looking for full-time employment of our employees. They're establishing a training partnership, we're trying to look at the possibility of doing training in their operations in Thailand and China. And we also have already started looking at posting applicable positions on their webpage. We met with them, we actually went through a process, and I think that is a great potential. And so now I would like to invite Mr. Steve Buckin of Hillwood, and Mr. Chris Martin from Maruyama Natural Sales, and we want to show you a TCC intern. Would you all please come forward? And you can start.
Chairman Hadley, and President Greenhill, and Board of Trustees, thank you for having us here tonight. Mr. McLendon has pretty much told the whole story of why we are here. I think we've, I've been before you all before, and explained what foreign trade zones are and how they work, and the importance to economic development. Mr. McLendon mentioned that they are moving into the City of Fort Worth and to Tarrant County, and they'll be bringing at least 25 new jobs to start with, and those jobs are paying $40,000-plus, and they have planned expansion and possibly some manufacturing assembly in the future, so they'd be great corporate citizens for us. And what we are asking for is for the Board of Trustees to issue a letter of no objection to this, so that we can include this in our application to Washington, D.C., to the Department of Commerce for their foreign trade zone application. And I want to, this is Chris Martin, the National Sales Manager. The President Mark Diouss is not able to be with us tonight. He wanted to be here, but he has a board meeting in Japan, so he said, "Come to Tarrant County, or go be nice to my Board of Directors." So, he had to show up there. So.
I want to show up.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Diouss did record a video.
My name is Mark Adias, and I am the Vice President for Maruyama U.S. First of all, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the Tarrant County College Board of Directors for allowing Maruyama the opportunity to talk a little bit about this company and its potential relationship with TCC. I would like to apologize for not being here in person to present this case, but my own board meeting in Japan did not allow me the privilege to speak to you in person. At my last meeting with Mr. McLendon, I took the opportunity to explain about the wonderful company I am a part of. For over 115 years, Maruyama has led the world in the manufacture of pump technology and two-stroke engine manufacturing of outdoor power equipment. Though worldwide, we now total over 700 employees, we are still family-owned, with strong family values. For the last six years, our business in the U.S. has been conducted from Denton, Texas. From here, we run the logistical and light manufacturing of all of North America, South America, Hawaii, and Guam. In 2010, we began a program to find interns that had an interest in the business program that we offer here at Maruyama. Being in Denton, we chose to align ourselves with the University of North Texas, and during the last two and a half years, we have had three interns, and one of them, who is with you tonight, is now a full-time employee. We're extremely happy to be moving to Fort Worth, and therefore, it is our goal to recreate this education program. As my eldest daughter Jacqueline, a former TCC student, and who is now in her first year of law school in Indiana, had a quality education from TCC, it is our hope that Maruyama will be as fortunate to receive quality students from TCC as Indiana has been with my daughter. We are also offering, where possible, factory tours in Tokyo, Thailand, and China through the Maruyama Group for your students. We hope that the Board members accept our offer of cooperation, and likewise, we need your assistance to complete our free trade zone agreement. Again, thank you for allowing me to give this presentation, and I apologize for not being here in person. Good night.
Very well.
And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the Board may have about foreign trade zones or about Maruyama specifically.
Any questions?
This kind of activity is what has led the state of Texas to be number one in the country in terms of exports. It's the free trade zones, along with a lot of other things, so if there's no further questions, I'll move for approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, Carter. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None? Congratulations.
Thank you.
May I meet your students?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I was going to say, if I may, I really want for y'all to, this is an intern, now he's an employee, and when we talk to it, there's a lot of things. Tell them the good things that we did for you and their expectations.
Well, I'm Eric Sambulak. I was actually a student at the University of North Texas, and when Maruyama U.S. was located in Denton, they had, as Mark Diouss said, aligned themselves with the UNT for their internship program. Now that we're moving to Tarrant County, we find it best to align ourselves with TCC and avail ourselves of the talent that we can find here.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations from all of us.
I manage certain aspects of the website, and I'm working on some illustrated parts list technology that we can use to facilitate the distribution of our products.
Great.
Very good.
Good job, Eric.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and come back anytime.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item is Item Number 17, consideration and approval of foreign trade zone, subzone for Lasco Products, Inc.
Again, we have another investment zone, and we're really looking to not only help our partners, but also for them to help us, and so this is a great opportunity. Lasco Company, and we actually, we went ahead and actually visited, and it's a great learning process, not only to see what they're doing, but actually through the process of visiting, we're thinking we even open some more possibilities for the district. We see our place is really, one of the objectives of TCC, who I see it, is to making sure that every student has an opportunity for employment, or for an opportunity for an internship, and we're trying to develop as many paths as we can in that manner, sir. So Lasco employs about 325 people in Fort Worth, and they're also asking a letter of no objection. There, the, Tarrant County, I'm just going to summarize it for the trustees, Tarrant County would have to give up approximately $2,674 every year, and so they have offered to help us.
You mean, you mean Tarrant County College?
Tarrant County College.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Okay, so Tarrant College District would be foregoing $2,674 per year, and what they have offered generously to offer us in exchange is, they're going to provide us, on an annual basis, career training with our corporate services for about $5,000 every year. They're also going to use, they're trying to look at putting, they're using their websites for positions. They also will be funding five children on the Northwest for early college for kids, and in addition, we're also asking for other technical things. I would like to now introduce Mr. Ed Macacy, the Chief Operating Officer, and Sean Roberts, the Plant Manager, if they would come on, and they could give their presentation, all right?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, and the Board. Mark stole my thunder, but we'll briefly tell you a little bit about Lasco. I'm joined tonight with our Plant Manager in Fort Worth, Sean Robinson. We have 300 people working for us at our Meacham Boulevard facility. We've been in Fort Worth, we're a 107-year-old company, but we've been in Fort Worth since 1978, and we are also a family-owned business. The thing that's real unique about Lasco is that we are, here in Fort Worth, we're the only manufacturer of oscillating pedestal fans and table fans that you see in like Walmart or Home Depot. Everyone else we compete with is in China. And so what we've done is, we've done that with an incredibly talented workforce, we've done it with heavy investment in plant and equipment. Every year, it's over a million dollars a year. And one of our, the things that we do do is, we do import the motor and the cord, but we do all the injection molding, the packaging comes here locally in Fort Worth. And because of that, and the seasonal nature of our business, it's very important to get a foreign trade zone started, and that's why we're here tonight, asking you for a no objection letter. What that will allow us to do is to reduce our customs costs in terms of transaction costs, broker costs. customs costs in terms of transaction costs, broker costs. And as Mark said, it will cost $2,674 in lost revenue in 2014. And, you know, we looked at it as part of this. In our business, it's very cost competitive. I guess that's why we're the only ones in the United States doing it. And so part of this involves us having to build on to the facility in Meacham Boulevard, and we'll have, working through the city now, but anywhere from 150,000 to over 200,000 more square feet of warehouse. And I just took a very, very low number, which is our agreement. The city, the county, the water district, the hospital district have already approved this in previous meetings. But just that alone will bring real estate tax increases to the college of over $7,500. So it does cost $2,674 in lost personal property tax because of the exemption that is required by the foreign trade zone, but you'll pick up $7,500 there. As Mark said, we will, we have already met with and are planning on, in our fall, doing a training program through the college, retaining the college faculty to do our annual management training. And I'm going to ask Shelley if you could just go to the back. Right, we have had for, I guess, since 2005, well before the foreign trade zone came on, we had sponsored Diamond Hill Elementary in Fort Worth, in our neighborhood. And so we've been doing all kinds of programs. We give them support that they use for tutoring. So what we'd like to do is to try to provide for children from Diamond Hill to do the college for kids program in the summer. We're working with the principal, Ms. Verall, to set that up. We've already, Sean and his team has met with the career services people. They've been out into our facility. They've seen the kind of jobs that we had, and they have a good understanding of the employment that we have, of opportunities that we have. And we're also been working, you know, as I said, with the training people. So I think it is a win-win for both Lasco and the college, and we look forward to continue to working with you. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Okay. If there's a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
That was a tie. Ms. Appleman seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I did want to mention, I did want to introduce you to the Plant Manager.
Please do.
Who, tell them, uh, where you're going to school and everything.
I just wanted to put in that my son is a student at Northeast Campus right now, and I appreciate you guys giving him a place to go.
Way to go. All right.
Is that... Is Lasco the brand name on the products?
Yes.
I'm over here.
Oh, okay.
So you don't manufacture under anybody else's names? Strictly Lasco?
Lasco Galaxy and Airplane.
I'll look for them.
Yes. We'll buy your fans.
Very good. Well, thank you both for being here today. I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is not...
We're now up for Mr. Greenhill and Board Members, all of our contracts.
All of our contracts, item 18.
Teddy has the first few of those, quite a few. Seven, eight, nine, ten.
Ten. Good evening again.
Go ahead.
Yeah, next 10 items. And I just thought I'd give a little advertisement about how we're spending the money that you so graciously awarded us last year of about $78 million in our Fund 40 account. I have such great staff that puts these stats together, and I was actually thinking about giving you these stats tonight. And miraculously, in my inbox appeared this email from Tori Gazalski, who works with us and puts this together. We have four months, 12 days, 4 hours and 23 seconds till August 31st, when our budget is over. And we have spent, after you hopefully approved the 10 items tonight, spent or encumbered 74% of our budget. So we're really excited that we only have 26% to go, which is much better than our progress last year. So we're really getting kind of our act together in spending, you know, I always say it's easy to spend $74 million if it's one building or two buildings or three buildings, but when it's hundreds and hundreds of small projects that all add up, it's a challenge. And I just always congratulate the village that surrounds me, that does this work tonight. So we have 10 items. The first four come under the leadership of David Holkey, Director David Holkey, and Director Walt Williams, who are engineering. They do infrastructure, safety, security, sustainability, utility-type work. Most of this work, as we move down the line, would not have a dream score because it's the kind of work that we just have to do as a district. So the first four items, number 18 is the first. These first two are actually, that are coming up are at the Northwest Campus. The first one is ask your approval for a cooperative agreement with Simplex Grinnell to do fire alarm systems at the Northwest Campus for the Fire Service Training Center. It's for, and for the Fire Service Training Center Fire Station. It's for $126,696. This will really help us get one system for a fire alarm, and it also connects to our new emergency operations center that we put in down at the Trinity River Campus that is our district-wide emergency center. So this is important work, and we ask your approval of this cooperative agreement.
Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Item number 19 is another cooperative agreement. It's with Envirematic Systems to provide thermal utility metering equipment at the Northwest Campus. This is in an effort to support our overall sustainability initiative. It helps us verify savings benchmarks. So it's a metering system. It's for $113,819.16, and we are asking for approval of this cooperative agreement.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, Carter. Has been a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Shifting over to the Northeast Campus, we're asking tonight for approval of a inter-local purchasing system cooperative agreement with Texas Air Systems to provide air handler replacements at the Health and Physical Education Building. This contract is for $383,881, and this replaces worn-out systems, and it will provide much better environment for our students.
Thank you.
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Ms. Vandergrift, this time. She's got it. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
The last of the four in the infrastructure area is at the South Campus, and this is also a cooperative agreement with Hallmark Casework to provide and install laboratory hood exhaust systems at the South Campus. This is in the remodeling of the Science Building there. It's for $179,917.60.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Okay, shifting, the last six items are shifting over to planning and development under the leadership of our Director Kirby Chadwell. The first one, item number 22, is at the South Campus. Actually, the next three items are going to be at the South Campus. Next four items, I think, are all competitive sealed bids. So we went out for bid on each one of these and got a competitive price on it. All four of these that we're going to talk about are really in an effort to do what we call our summer crunch. It's to get work done during the summer to accommodate our academic calendar. So these are really important, and I got to give a lot of credit to the team to do this amount of work at the same time. These all bid out at the, kind of at the last minute to get these in here, so we appreciate your consideration of these. So this first one goes to Imperial Construction for renovation to the Science Labs at the South Campus. It's $4,238,000. And you have a summary that talks a little bit about how old this building is. We did some work about 15 years ago at this building, but really, it's in dire need of getting updated.
Thanks. Do I hear a motion? Been a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Dr. Gird will smile.
Just checking up. I'm glad he dared to say it. Did I miss the second, Mr. Heat, or...
I had a second.
Oh, you seconded. Okay, Carter seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Another for the South Campus is an exciting project because it's on our math aporams, which will now help us accommodate 100 students. This is a contract also with Imperial Construction for Math Aporium at the South Campus. It's $1,205,000. We're asking for your approval.
I move for approval.
Conrad Heat moves for approval. Is there a second? Okay, Carter. Seconds it. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is another competitive sealed bid. It's a request for approval on a contract with Big Sky for renovation of classrooms and laboratories at the South Campus in the Technology Building. This is to actually accommodate two full technical programs that are coming from the Southeast Campus, Architecture and Construction. And it's for $2,597,205.30.
Thank you.
We're moving those classes, those programs?
Was that a motion, Ms. Appleman?
I move approval.
Okay, Ms. Appleman moves approval. I heard, I could hear it coming. Okay.
The instructions.
Item number 25.
Wait a minute, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, sorry.
Second by, okay, Carter. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Keep going.
Okay, just three more left, I think, here. Item number 25 is at the Northwest Campus. This is approve a contract with Envision General Contractors for Math Aporams for the Northwest Campus, $755,633.07, again, to accommodate 100 students.
Thank you. There's, there already is one there. This is in addition to?
It expands it to accommodate 100 students at one time.
Okay. Okay. I move for approval.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
This, item number 26, is also at the Northwest Campus to do the renovation of the campus bookstore. It is a JOC contract with Imperial Construction for $487,264. We're asking your approval.
Any discussion? Motion?
I'm wondering if we're going to regret spending the money for these bookstore renovations when we're all electronic in five years from now.
They sell more than books.
Yeah, they sell stores.
Okay.
They'll be smaller, probably.
Dr. Morrison moves approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Just a side note on that one. We do get some reimbursements from the bookstore contract to do that work. So that funding that you're seeing is not coming all out of TCC.
Mr. Carter, what happens when we did the bookstore contract, what they did is they gave a certain amount of money to refurbish the bookstore, and they will take care of some of the refurbishing themselves. The other infrastructure, then it'll also be on our cost. So there is some of that that they're actually doing. Your point of what will the bookstore look at, that's actually something that you're going to be seeing very shortly when we talk about textbooks, because it's, it is a question on the mind, not only of ourselves, but throughout the whole country. Yes, sir.
Ms. Winnett seconded that motion. Any other comments, questions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Last but not least is item number 27 for some important roadwork that we're doing at the South Campus. The contract is with Fries &amp; Nichols to do engineering, design, construction documents. It's a not-to-exceed contract of $136,756. And I know my great team behind me is going to manage this contract and probably come in less. So we're asking for approval for this item tonight.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do you want this road?
I mean, smile.
Yeah, he's smiling. It's needed. I know it is.
I know, it is already.
And this roadwork was part of the original 2004 master plan, updated in 2009. So it's sort of long overdue, actually.
Do we have the road working place for the charter school that we're talking about? I mean, this, are we, are we thinking about that in the...
Yes, there's discussions going on. In fact, yesterday, they had a meeting in regard to the roadwork and parking and accommodating that, so.
Do we have a motion?
I did. I moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Petty.
Okay, Mr. Marshall is up next.
Mr. Marshall, the technology, okay.
Good evening, Board, Chancellor. I have two items for submission for approval. The first item, number 28, is a request for Board approval for purchase of Dell computers on wheels. The actual computer itself isn't on wheels. It's a cart, and we store 30 laptops in the cart. And the cart allows us to move basically a lab full worth of computers into and out of our classrooms that are not outfitted with computers. So this request is for three of those units, a total of 90 computers and associated carts and equipment for $119,261.94.
Thank you. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Are these secure facilities? Do you lock it up, or do you have to put the whole cart in a secure facility?
The carts, they're set up and broken down each day depending on which classroom, and overnight they're stored in a locked closet where they're powered up and the batteries are refreshed.
And they're called cows.
Cows, yes. They're called cows.
Second.
Second by Conrad Heat. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 29 is a request for Board approval for the purchase of the Cherwell Service Management Solution. This is the replacement for our Help Desk Ticket System, which currently only is used for handling incidents. So the software that we need needs to handle not only things that go bump in the night, but change requests, project management tool, requests for new software, new hardware. They're handled differently than things that fail. So the software, the service, the combination of an implementation and the first-year licensing is $277,000. Okay, let's try this again. That number right there, $277,260. I go on a cruise and I just lose it all.
Oh.
Brag about it.
Caribbean.
Was this the only bidder for this?
No, there was, this was a result of a competitive bid process, but this was the lowest cost.
Okay, I'll vice the board. I move approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number 30. Excuse me.
Okay, we, number 30 is Mr. McLendon and Michael Herndon. They have a few. The first one is for a job order construction contract.
Good evening again. Thank you. I come forward to ask you on the development of a JOC program. And I asked, I asked Mr. Herndon if I could explain a little bit, because in early in my career, I actually worked with this a lot, and I can actually address some of the good and challenges. The program, the current review of the JOC program will end in August of 2013. The current program uses RS means, and it, RS means is a way that you estimate the cost of construction, and it's a theoretical value based on everything. Some of the challenges of RS means is that it uses, it takes an extra effort to be able to take a generic construction process and acclimate it to a bid. It also does not always have the same local value. So you could actually be able, the construction industry is actually changing quite a bit, and if you're not able to bring that together, or if you're not able to do that, some of the actual theoretical values in which you're trying to cost out a construction industry could be, could be a little bit higher. So that's why they're trying. So I'm going to let Mike give you a little more of the details, but what we found out in our experience when we used RS means for what we were doing is we were estimating the construction of pipelines throughout the United States. We actually had to mirror away from RS means because the numbers were a little bit much higher, and we weren't able to localize it. By the time we took RS means and localized it, we realized that our capital cost estimation was better done, and our drawings were better done if we just did it ourselves. So Mike?
Thank you, Mark. Chancellor Hadley, President Greenhill, members of the Board, is...
As Mark mentioned, and he did a good job explaining the, how the RS means pricing book works, one of the challenges when I got, I wouldn't say challenge, one of the things that we were looking at when I first come on board, as well as our construction purchasing manager, was to find a way to improve upon our JOC program. The JOC program we currently have was in place when we got here. It had a two-year pool, approved pool by the board, which expires August thirty-first, August thirty-first to 2013. So, we started exploring ways that we could improve on the program. Some of the challenges, as Mr. McLendon mentioned, with the RS means process, it's very cumbersome and difficult. We came across this program, Jorge and I actually attended a conference in Houston, where this program was presented. We communicated with the vendor several more times. We actually talked very specifically about how they could roll the program out for us, how it would work for us, how we could engage them. And then we finally looked at their references. They're currently being used by several other schools, agencies in the state of Texas. They're a national company. The University of North Texas has actually just rolled one out. Jorge and I went up to their pre-bid meeting when they were rolling theirs out. Texas Tech currently uses the program. There's several others, Harris County Schools, the University of Texas Health Science Center, some of those. One of the advantages to moving in this direction, the thing that piqued our interest the most, was part of what they provide to us in this agreement is a customized price book specific to Tarrant County College's construction specifications and standards. The RS means is a very general book. The book that they would develop for us will go down to the specific carpet that we use in buildings, to the exact doorknob that we use, priced to Fort Worth, Tarrant County, current pricing, both for materials and labor. And we feel like the result of that will be an actual reduction in the cost of some of these JOC contracts. In talking to some of the other agencies that are using them, most are experienced between a 10 and 12 percent reduction in the cost of their JOC contracts. That alone would more than offset the cost to us to run this program. As you'll note in the, in the agenda item, the, the cost, there's no cost upfront. Their business model basically is, we'll do this for you and we'll make our money as you use JOC programs, or as you issue JOC contracts. The advantage to us is if we're not satisfied with the results of those, we quit using them. So, we have no obligation beyond, once we make that decision. So, they currently, their current fee is, will be 5 percent of each JOC contract, I'm sorry. Of each JOC contract, up until six million. And then from then on, it will drop down to 1.95 percent and stay there. To give you a concept of how that works, if approved, they will work with us very closely developing the, the price book. They will work with us putting together the RFP, going out on the street. They'll work directly with our supplier diversity manager to engage as many minority business contractors in the Fort Worth area, to get them on board, make sure they're comfortable with the way the program works and how to present their bids. And then competitively bid the JOC program, which we anticipate will result in a pool substantially smaller than what we have now. We currently have sixteen, seventeen contractors. We envision probably a six to eight range in this. And then, and start rolling the program out. So, we request your approval to engage the Gordian Group to do this moving forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I, we're already investing about a half a million dollars a year in a consultant to help us control costs. I mean, we, you're paying, I think, 5 percent of the first six million, then you're 1.8, 1.9, something like that for every million you spend. So, basically, we're sort of making them a partner in our purchasing. Maybe they save money, maybe they don't, but, you know, and I, I was, I went on Google this afternoon and read about the company, and then I even watched their little video. And I don't know much more than I, than I did now. But it seems like this is a significant decision that could be quite costly. And I just don't think I know enough about it to vote for it at this time.
Any other discussion?
I had a question. I wanted to clarify the time period over which the first six million dollars of work would be.
It's not a set period now. Based on our history, we think within probably 12 to 14 months, we'll reach that threshold. But it's gonna vary, because I don't know from one year to the next, how many JOC contracts we'll actually be issuing, based on, you know, until we have a budget and to work with, you know, what projects are out there. You know, we currently have a restriction on the amount of a JOC contract of $500,000. So, you know, it's only gonna be for smaller projects, so.
Right. And did I hear you say that it would reduce the number of contractors from our current number to a smaller number?
Our goal would be to reduce that a little bit. I think currently we have too many. It's hard to spread that work out amongst that many. And it reduces the competitiveness of the pool to start with, when you, when you put so many in. We wanna strict that to the more competitive proposals, using criteria that more than just price, obviously, but also MWE, things like that, they're important to the district.
How will you determine, you said their cost is, number one, we don't pay upfront. But you, it's gonna cost us 5 percent. But you said we're gonna save 10 percent. How are you gonna determine that?
Well, it's a good question. That's what we're hearing from some of the other institutions, what they are realizing. In order to put a hard figure on that, we would actually have to have a price book completed and have bids in, and maybe not awarded, so we know where bids are. And then compare that to where we are with our current program, to give you, to tell you, we would save next dollar. So, can I do that today? No, sir, I can't.
But at what point can you? I mean, before we start paying them, or?
We, yes, I'm sure we can do that very late in the process before we start doing that. And again, if, you know, we don't find that the savings that they're generating, savings are being compensated, stop using the program. That's when we have no obligation.
So, we stop using the program? Do we still owe them six million dollars?
Whatever your contract is at that point.
It's a 30-day out, is it not, Mike?
Oh, yeah. We, we're only obligated to pay them when we use, we issue contracts based on their book. And one of the other things that their program includes, which is part of their cost, is a software program that will aid both purchasing facilities and the contractors in putting together these pricing proposals. We worked, we engaged Nina's group and discussed this on several occasions and have their buy-in to move in this direction with our JOC program.
But wasn't the question, if we stop using them, do we still owe them money?
No, sir.
Well, it almost looks like it's a two-step approval process. We say yes tonight to engaging them to do training.
Well, to develop the price book, yes, ma'am.
The custom price book. And then in the summer, we'll be asked.
We would be bringing, whatever pool results of the process, we would be taking to you, hopefully, August period, so that we would have something in place.
What if, at that point, for whatever reason, we don't like what Mr. Carter learns about them, and we decide to stop the process? What's our indebtedness?
Zero.
Zero.
I think you're, you're already paying them for the contracts that they work with. You own the, so if they don't work on contracts, then, but you owe them to that point, that the stuff they've already worked on.
Well, again, that's, that's their business model, Mr. Carter.
Sure. I know, I know. I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know. I have little flares going off, and I don't feel good about it. And.
Well, the other thing, too, Mr. Carter, the Gordian Group, as I understand it, is a part of the by-board? Am I, is that, am I remembering that correct?
I'm sorry.
The Gordian Group, does that apply to part of the by-board?
I'm not sure as well that I feel good about cutting down the list of particular vendors. I don't see how that makes it less competitive. You have fewer competing for the same thing. And also, you, we're spending a lot of money. It's, it seems more useful to distribute it to more vendors, construction people county-wide or in the region.
That's something we can certainly take into consideration, Mr. Carter, when the JOC pool is brought to you, and even before it's brought to you, we can certainly adjust. And I have listened to the staff over time, talk about the difficulty with having so many people in the pool. I'm not sure if I thoroughly understand why it's more difficult having so many, except this is a management thing from it. And I would guess, and I believe Mike said this, one of the reasons they began looking at this is because they do have so many to manage. But if we get this additional help, perhaps it will be easier for us to manage those. But I was gonna speak to the references. We never engage anybody to work for us without checking their references. So.
I, I saw, I went online, I saw that they're.
In the other comments?
So, what's the downside of us not saying go ahead tonight? I mean.
We would, in order to have a JOC program after August 31st, we would have to work this summer to put together our own.
You'd have to do your own book.
Put together our own. Based on RS means.
I understand the difficulty of putting together bids, particularly when there's so many products out there. I liked what you said, that they would construct their price book based on our specifications.
That's correct.
So, that's a tremendous, that would be a tremendous help to us and anyone bidding for any of our projects. So, what's the negative of us going ahead tonight with this?
Negative? Well, moving forward, if we find that it's not saving us the money we anticipate it saving us, that would be the only negative that I know of.
Would it be possible to approve it tonight with the proviso that you come back and, at the point where you realize that we've either made a savings or not made a savings, and we can make another decision as to whether to continue?
Well, again, we will bring the pool, whatever pool, pools result from this. Again, this is on the smaller JOC contracts. But, yeah, I'll be happy to do that. At the time we bring the pool to you, by then, we should be able to run some comparisons. And I could share those numbers with you, where it is. And if you're not happy with it, then don't approve the pool. And we won't have a contract with Gordian, because we won't have a pool to issue. And we would have to do our own at that point.
Okay. And that will be August? What's your time?
We anticipate trying to get it to you in August. Yes, sir. It takes, as you can imagine, it's a pretty tedious type process to go through and price all these things. That book, when they get through, is about that thick. And of course, they put it on CDs as well, and it's part of their computer program. And so, it's a very tedious process. It takes them some time to do that. And then they would obviously train staff with their software product on how to use it. They'll work directly with contractors to make sure they're on board, they're comfortable with it. And we make sure everybody feels good about it and moving forward.
I see Nina at the microphone. And before she comes, I want to say one thing. Nina said earlier, she reminded us that we had 78 million dollars in our construction budget. And she said, that's not such a big deal if you've got three or four projects you're gonna spend 78 million dollars on. But when you have hundreds of projects, small, medium, large, I ask you to appreciate the volume of work that's caused by this. Tarrant County College is not a small operation. We are a very large operation. Takes a lot of effort and work to move this institution. And when the staff looks for ways, always, to be more efficient and to bring more efficiency to the college. And I ask the trustees to very seriously consider these kinds of requests, because they do actually make us better as an institution. And not only that, they save us money. One of the big problems, neither they really go into it, but one of the big problems we've had since I've been in this office, and we've been spending so much money, is having the staff to really work through all of these things, so that they could get the projects on the road and finished. And very often, we don't get to do it because we don't have the kind of help we need. And we don't want to hire people ourselves to do all these different things. We can't afford that. So, we look at outsourcing a lot of these, these programs. And I would, would really urge you to support this, because I don't think there's a lose in it at all. If we don't get any value from it, we just simply walk away from it. We probably be looking at somebody else who could bring us value, because this does change the dynamic of this institution a lot if we were to do this. Nina, you want to add something?
You took the words right out of my mouth, but you said it much more eloquently than I probably could have. But, so exactly what I was gonna say. But Dr. Morrison, I would just support what you were saying. The, when, and Mike and our team has been working hand in hand on this since procurement brought the idea, gosh, way last, after Mike came on board, because we've been really struggling with how to best use a JOC pool. And we have been concerned about the amount of contractors in the pool. So, one of the things that we were very interested in is this book. It's actually customized to a community college cost. I think one of the things that the RS means book does not do is give us true cost. So, then you're stuck with a cost measurement that you can't control, because that's what the JOC contract utilizes. So, this customized book, if we don't get anything else out of this, other than this customized book, it will be worth it from that point. And as Mike and Mark have both referenced, if we don't like it, we pull the plug. I mean, all you're doing is agreeing to a concept, and we're all, you know, going to be evaluating it and analyzing it. If we don't like it, I mean, this is all new to us, too. And so, again, part of it is just getting into it with them, allowing the time to build the book, see how it works, present the JOC pool to you. And then at that juncture, you know, if we get going on, it doesn't work, we'll go out with an RFP and manage the JOC ourselves. But we thought that the exercise of getting this book done, as Mike says, is huge, is gonna be much more specialized to community college costs on items. I think, in the long run, our hope is that we'll get a better cost out of it, which means more dollars to our students versus having to spend it on construction projects, so.
I'd like to move for approval with the proviso that you come back to us in August and let us make a decision as to whether or not to continue. Once you have your facts and figures and.
Right. We're happy to do that.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Ms. Winnett.
Ms. Winnett, I'm sorry.
The further discussion would be that you not necessarily consider it essential to decrease the number of contracting companies. I think you should be open-minded about that as you move through the process.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that's not a set figure. You know, we'll, we'll work with the Gordian Group to decide what's, what's, would be the best fit for Tarrant County College. And if that means expanding the pool, then by all means, we'll do that.
And hopefully, some of those people would still be from Tarrant County.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's our goal. You know, that's what we hope to see. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Any further comments, discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Carter's voted against it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. But don't go far.
Our next item is to consider and approve a unified print copy center and mailroom management agreement with Denitect. Mark, you're leading that one off?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I, I'm trying a new style and a new software that I got out of Denmark, and it's, I hope, I hope the board likes it, because that's how I'm trying to do my work. The print management contract is something that I have been looked, the campuses looked. We typically spend a little bit less than three million dollars a year. It typically includes copiers, their maintenance, it's also includes a mail distribution. In the new contract, when we looked at this, we actually did a different approach, in which we looked at a laser printer, toner, and print management software. So, what we did is we looked at traditional printing, and we reached out to IT, and we said, how you manage your printer is not just about printing, it's also looking at computers. So, what we did is, I'm gonna pass it on to Mike, but he's gonna lead you through the current process, pros and cons. He's gonna tell you how we analyzed it. He's gonna give you the recommended strategy and how he did his RFP process. Mike, please.
Thank you again, Mark. Good evening again. As you're aware, last year, we started having a good many of our copier contracts. We currently have approximately 300 multifunction printers college-wide. About 170 or so of those were expired last year. As you recall, we came to the board and asked you for a six-month extension to give us time to more thoroughly analyze what we were doing here at Tarrant County and try to find ways to improve both our functionality and improve our cost. In that, we went out for an RFP and we engaged an independent consultant to come in and do a full assessment of everything we were doing print-wise, not just from our copier standpoint, but also look at our copy centers, look at our printers, what we were doing printing, where we were sending print jobs, things like that. That company came in and spent a little over a week scouring our campuses, communicating with departments, talking about how they use their things, collecting an immense amount of data on how things were currently being done. And then they went back and they compared that data, our data, to some national benchmarks to see where the opportunities were. And then they came to us with a recommendation of how we should move forward with trying to replace that fleet and manage our print services moving forward. And that recommendation was a unified print program to include our copy centers of facilities management. We started, worked closely with the consultant, developing an RFP to try to meet those needs first of the year. We actually issued the RFP first part of February. We, proposals were due March the 18th. We received seven proposals. We put together a, part of the RFP included evaluation criteria. We told the vendors how we would evaluate them and I did wanna share some of that with you. The evaluation criteria included the technical requirements at 20%, service and support at 20%, corporate experience at five, an implementation plan at 5%, references at 5%, and other value-added proposals at 10%. Minority women business enterprises at 10, and finally, cost at 25%. We put together an evaluation committee that represented several different areas at the college that worked very closely with printing. And I asked that group to come with, to join me tonight, and I would ask each of them to stand up as I introduce them, so you'll know who served on that committee. Now, one of them, I believe, had to catch a flight. Kim Lambert-Thomas, who's at Business Services, she's not here. But the other members of the committee are Rick Heiser, who represents libraries and print services, Suresh Vinika Paul, and Richard Sullivan from IT, Angela Gonzalez from purchasing, wherever Angela is, and finally, Andre McEwing, who is the supplier diversity manager who reviews all MWB considerations. We, once we got the proposals, the evaluation committee had an enormous task, as you might imagine, with very detailed information. The way we asked for pricing, or the way we asked for proposals from the vendors was, we asked for a primary proposal where everybody submitted pricing to us for the exact same things. You know, which included, you know, managing our printers. It was still a comprehensive proposal. And we also encouraged vendors to submit a creative alternate proposal. How do you see, what are some other things you can do to benefit the college? And most vendors did, not all did, but most of them did. The committee evaluated those original seven proposals, scoring them using the evaluation criteria mentioned earlier. And the results was that we had two firms that really stood out above the rest, both in pricing and quality of their proposal. We took those two firms, moved them forward into kind of as finalists, and took them into the next stage of the process. That stage included requesting that they bring printers that they proposed for testing by our IT department, both from compatibility with our systems to security issues, things like that. We followed, the following, the following day, we asked them to come in and do a formal demonstration of that equipment to the evaluation committee. We asked them to do a formal presentation of their proposals, both approaches, to the evaluation committee. And then finally, we ended the day with question and answer session with those two finalists. Obviously, they were, you know, separate sessions, we didn't have them in there at the same time. Once we got through that process and determined that, from a technical standpoint, both would meet the requirements, we asked each for a best and final offer, which we asked them to include kind of the best of both worlds in their two proposals. Both had submitted both alternate and primary proposals. Both had submitted some things in their alternate that we wanted to be a part of a program here. And they also sometimes left off things there that was in the primary. So we basically told them what we were looking for was a complete solution. We wanted them both to come back to us with one proposal that met all of our needs. We included print behavioral software, which will be a part of the contract, which will help us manage not only the way jobs are printed, which can also drive down costs even more substantially than what you'll see in a minute, but also help us collect data we need and things like that that currently has been a manual process. So at the end of the process, we got proposals back. We asked for them to give us a price to eliminate all current leases in whatever manner they could do it. Denetec, one of the finalists, their alternate proposal included that. They agreed to wipe away all of the current leases so that from day one of the contract, we would start with brand-new, fresh, new technology equipment from day one, every piece of it, both those that were expired and those that still had leases on it. Image Tech got to the same place, they got there in a little bit different way. Their process was to do a step lease where they would actually pay us the remaining string of payments on the remaining leases we had out there. We would have to store those somewhere and then they would replace them all with brand-new equipment. Then we would continue the string of payment until the leases were paid out. So they got there, they just got there a little bit different way. Both final proposals were very competitive. Both of them had pluses and minuses. The evaluation committee thoroughly reviewed them, they considered all of those elements. And they followed our policies and procedures to the T in making their final recommendation. And that final recommendation, in a very close, was to continue with the current vendor, Denetec. With that, we recommend that the board consider approving a six-year agreement with Denetec based on the agenda item here. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Would you go over that criteria again?
Yes, sir.
Different percentages?
Technical requirements had a weight of 20%. Now, some things that were, to give you an idea, technical requirements, we had, we listed, we broke our copiers up into six different segments based on speed and volumes we anticipated to go through them. We set speed minimums on each of those. You know, if it's gonna do, it's gotta do a minimum, you know, if it's a segment two, it's gotta do a minimum of 25 prints per minute or something like that. Segment threes, 35, fours, and so on. So, you know, did they meet those requirements? Some, you know, the technical portion of it, did they meet, you know, our security and things like that? So those are kind of some of the things that the evaluation committee considered as part of the technical requirements. Service and support, you know, their plan for providing service, one of the things that we required in this RFP was three full-time technicians dedicated to Tarrant County College to make sure, because we're incorporating more than just copiers now, we still, we have thousands of printers that will be supported, and we wanted full-time dedicated technicians. So we asked them to, that would be under service and support.
So the technicians will service the printers as well as the copiers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What percent was that?
I'm sorry, that was 20 as well. Corporate experience, we weighted it 5%, you know, basically to ensure that they had done jobs of similar size. Implementation plan was weighted at 5%. As you might imagine, rolling out a program this large is pretty massive undertaking, so we wanted to make sure they had the capability to do that. References was at 5%. The other value added were things like, how would they get us to a fresh contract with no remaining old leases that we have to deal with, you know? So those are some of the things we considered in other value. The software component was considered in other value added, and that was at 10%. MWBE consideration was 10% and finally, price was 25%.
Does the working agreement take into consideration the expansion of our evening and weekend college programs? And do you foresee that the way you have the agreement written up would be able to support those operations as well?
Yes, ma'am. Part of the RFP, when we did it, we asked for pricing for future units based on a lease basis, so we did take that in consideration moving forward.
Okay, well, let me ask that question a little differently. At the risk of not having read, you know, all of this just really, really, really well...
Yes, ma'am.
But I did see something that referred to eight to five hours, and we really don't have eight to five hours here at TCC.
You talking about from a service and support perspective?
Well, right. So I wanna make sure that this contract is flexible enough to address the realistic working hours of our people here.
Right, yes. Service and support generally will require, is included at no cost. If we have to bring somebody out, you know, at 11 o'clock at night for something, generally, we're gonna have to pay an overtime rate for that. But historically, the current vendor has never done that. They've covered it all under their current stuff, so.
What is, is there a guaranteed response time?
Yes, it's four hours.
Four hours?
Yes, sir.
Does your formula take into account locally-owned businesses, which I guess these both are, women and minority-owned businesses?
It is, the MWB, which was 10% of the weight, yes, sir. The Image Tech actually had a very high score in that area because they were a MWBE firm in Tarrant County. The Denetec score was lower. They come to us with a subcontracting plan, which got them some points, but not very many. So Image Tech actually had a higher score in that category.
Okay, and this does no, like in previous, the one we discussed the other day, there's no long-term aspects that you're considering here. Are all of the costs of everything, the materials, the supplies, et cetera, is that a fixed price for the six-year contract?
On the maintenance portion of that?
Yeah, maintenance, supplies.
Yes, it is a fixed cost.
Toner?
Yes, sir.
Everything?
Yes, sir. Everything but paper, I'm sorry, it doesn't include paper, none of them would include paper.
Okay. And what about if a piece of equipment fails? Is there guaranteed replacement?
Yes, there is. Actually, there is a section of the contract, and I know you'll probably haven't had the opportunity to review that, but Section 34 of Exhibit B of the contract requires a 98% uptime. And any device that falls below 98% for two consecutive months has to be replaced with a like item.
At no cost.
At no cost. And we even have a provision in the contract that any, there's a $25 credit that will be issued to the college for every hour below that, that device stays offline.
So Mike, with your expertise and your experience, do you feel like this contract that you're proposing to us gives us the best option for addressing this issue with the college?
I think, yes. And let me explain that. We had to look, the selection committee, to correct that, the selection committee had to look at all of the evaluation criteria, not just price, not just MWBE and everything. And they were comparing two proposals, which were very similar. They got to the same place, maybe in a little bit different way, but they were very similar. Both were very competitive in pricing, there was not a big difference in the price. And, you know, at the end of the day, the committee reviewing all of that information felt very, the proposal from Denetec was the best value for Tarrant County College today.
Okay, let me ask you one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So do you think, well, is everything in this contract that you would want?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. Everything that we were looking for with this, the software component, the three full-time technicians, the, a good price. And one of the things I haven't touched on is the savings over where we are today. And I would like to touch on that a little bit. Our current, our current cost, when you consider what our current leases cost, the copier maintenance costs, the copy center operations costs, which are currently part of one agreement with Denetec currently, we included additional things in this contract that were not part of that, the software component we talked about, the three full-time technicians that currently were not here, and the management of 1,300 some odd laser printers, maintenance, toner, everything. If you consider all of what we were spending historically for all of those things, we, our monthly expense was about $225,000, okay? When you take it where we are today. The new contract is based on a monthly cost of about $152,000. So if you quite that over 72-month period, you're looking at about $5.5 million production.
It's 152?
152 monthly. Now, that figure is based on leases, it is an estimate of the number of prints from a maintenance standpoint, based on our historical. Actual may vary, up or down slightly. One of the parts, one of the important parts of this program, whatever vendor came in here, was a continual assessment of what we're doing from a print standpoint, mapping where our printers are, where our copiers are, continuing to review and come to management and say, "There's an opportunity to drive your cost down by moving the prints you're sending here at a higher cost to this device over here at a lower cost." So at the end of the day, I fully expect that cost to be lower than that.
Okay, so this is not an unlimited copy?
It is not. Every proposal we got was on a set fee per copy. It varied depending, we asked for a monochrome rate, monochrome multifunction, a color multifunction, monochrome printer, color printer. So we've got four different rate factors, depending on what type of print it is.
Okay. And how did you determine, or how did the consultant determine in the first place the exact number of copies that each piece of equipment that we presently have are running?
They installed a product called FM Audit, which captured over a period of time, I think about two-month period of time, the actual prints run by every printer. And we took that and developed an average and calculated it over the period to come up with the figure we used in the actual RFP. Again, everybody's was calculated on the same quantity. From the printer, on the copier side of things, any device that was connected to the network, which is probably about half of our current fleet, captured the same way through FM Audit. The remainder was through average billing clicks from the current vendor and compiling that into averages and calculating it out over the full time.
Okay, and you just have three employees?
Who is that?
I mean, the company will supply three technicians, is that all the people that...
No, they'll also have the copy center still, and that's a total of 12 full-time personnel to run the five copy centers.
Okay.
And then plus the three full-time technicians.
Okay. And why do you include campus mail delivery in this contract?
Well, I ask that because that predates me a little bit. I actually engaged Kim Thomas about that. And since the inception of the facilities management agreement that the college, when it started, I think back in 2007, they've included mail services part of the functions of that job, or part of the functions of that contract. They actually have used some of the duties that they pick up and drop off mail, metered outgoing mail and post office delivery, report copier volume and deliver supplies and things like that, are some of those duties. It equates to about four hours a day for one individual at each copy center to manage the mail portion. the mail portion of the responsibility for each campus.
Have you estimated, what part of this contract involves mail delivery? Do you have a dollar figure?
I can give you probably a monthly figure per campus, about 1,800.
Okay.
And I asked him if they had done an analysis, and they did an analysis to compare what it would cost the college to take that back on themselves versus continuing to outsource it, and they found it almost dead even cost when you go through the hiring of employees and, because you would have to have an employee at each campus, and the cost was, you know, there was really no savings to be generated that way, so that was the reason they wanted to continue to keep it managed here.
Have you looked at any alternatives other than doing it ourselves?
In what way?
Well, for example, I know Alamo College, they brought in, I don't know if it's UPS or FedEx, and they put a store in to their campus. They pay a lease for that, but they also supply a service so, that the college pays for. So it's net awash to the college.
No, we have not explored that. I mean, that's something we possibly could do. I haven't spoken with the chancellor about that.
It doesn't cost the college anything, plus you have that facility. That's a benefit to the students.
You'd have to do that five times, so, you know, at each of the campuses, so.
I don't know if that's.
I don't know, you know, I don't know, I haven't looked at it quite frankly, but that's something we certainly can, put that in the future, to move that away from this current contract. You know, you look at an hourly rate, you're looking at an hourly rate of about $17 an hour, you know, with no benefits from our costs, you know, and then if we were hiring people, chances are you're probably going to be about that when you add benefits for that type position.
And I don't know if this is appropriate, but Mr. Garner made a presentation earlier. Do you want to comment on that?
Well, I do. You know, one of the things that we did do with Image Tech is we actually worked above and beyond when we had set the deadline to get proposals in, because I think there was a misunderstanding between them and us to a certain degree as to what they needed to provide the proposal we were expecting. Once we understood that, we got that information to them. As far as the timeline being rushed, you know, we started this process in first part of February. We detailed the timeline in the RFP, and we told everybody from the beginning that this is our anticipated timeline. You know, we, when I notified the finalist, which was on a Thursday, and asked if they could get their machines to us on Tuesday for testing, both indicated that they could do that. Neither one of them said they couldn't do it. So that, it was accomplished. Whether it was the timeline was short or not, I had no control, you know, I mean, we wanted to get the stuff done, we wanted to get things evaluated, we wanted to stay on our timeline as quickly, as much as we could. Now, the concern over whether the committee had adequate information or understood their proposal, I don't agree with that. You know, we were last minute getting it from them, but we were in conversation, myself and the consultant with them, we understood what they were trying to do. When we got the pricing, we plugged it in to see where it was. We immediately took that to the evaluation committee. We explained what the approaches were, and we left it in their hands to make a decision what was best for Tarrant County College. So, you know, I feel like the committee is here, but I feel like they, and they actually had a conversation with the chancellor earlier today, that they felt comfortable with their decision, so.
I understand it's easier to be comfortable, costs being even with the company that you're already familiar with, and you stay with them, you don't have to make all kinds of changes. You know, clearly, this is almost an $11 million thing. It's a large amount of money. We basically made the companies that bid on it jump through hoops, and then in the end, the company that was the low bid doesn't get the business. I'm sure there's a lot more involved with it than that.
There is. Price is one portion of the evaluation. It's not the only.
Yeah, I know. Well, assuming they met all the criteria, they wouldn't have been on the list.
They did. I mean, you know, the evaluation committee had to consider all of the areas, and they had to consider each, up against each other, basically decide, you know, are they even? Is one a little better than the other? And that's how they had to go through that process. From a technical standpoint, did they both meet the technical requirements of minimums? Absolutely. Was one a little better than the other from a technical perspective? I don't have a score, but I think Denitex was scored higher because the speeds of their machines were at or above all of our minimums, and there were a couple of the, those proposed from Image Tech were at or just a little bit below. So there was a difference in those two things. You know, how important is that to Tarrant County College? You know, it depends on who's standing in front of the copier, I guess, and how long they have to stand there. But, you know, so there were some differences. They weren't exactly the same, and they had to consider all of those things.
Now, when you consider the speed and the longevity of the equipment, you know, there's a published amount that each copier company has, and then you have the real world. Are you pretty sure, are you convinced, that the equipment that you're proposing here is going to do the job and is going to live up to its published specifications?
I do, and from a maintenance standpoint, as mentioned earlier, any machine, even if it's late in the contract, that's having issues relevant to standards, it's got to be replaced.
Okay. Is there any benefit, Mr. Garner asked for a 30-day postponement of this, is there any benefit to the college to do that? Do you think that that's necessary? Is that going to?
In my opinion, I don't know what that will change, because I feel like the committee has seen everything they need to see to make a viable decision. Will 30 days change their mind in that effect? You know, I don't, I can't speak for the committee. Chancellor, do you want to?
Well, I questioned the committee at length this afternoon because we've had so much feedback on this contract, and I wanted to, as I told them, I asked them to all come together so I could look in their eyeballs as I asked the questions, and they were all adamant that they feel like they made the decision that is in the best interest of the college, and I would ask that committee to stand again, and I asked them to come tonight because I wanted you to see them, and I wanted you to see, you know, what positions they hold in the college and how they looked at this. And to a person, including Kim Thomas, and she could not be here this evening, she had to leave earlier for a flight, but to a person, they told me that they felt they had made the best decision on behalf of the college. And as Mike has just said, the Image Tech pricing was a little bit less than Denitex, but when they put all of the requirements together and did a score, I think Denitex was 91. Is that right, team? 91?
91 to 88 or 89.
To 88, I guess about three points difference. And they're thought to address your concern, Mr. Carter, about lower price and being in Tarrant County, and they had given points for that already. And, you know, the state laws that govern these processes don't allow us to give preferential treatment except what you have said as a board that you will give. And as you'll recall, I think you were on that committee, I think you were, that set the standards for participation, and we abided by those standards. I would tell you that, as I told the committee this afternoon, this is a tough business. And when you have contracts of this size, and you have people who are so very well-qualified to do them, and at some point, you have to make a decision. Decision isn't always popular, but as I've told everybody, you know, once I've, I have to trust the people who work here. I have to trust them, and even though, I even, I talked to Mike Herndon about this almost all the way to Austin yesterday, had Mike and Angela on the phone, asking every question you can imagine about this, because I wanted to be sure that we had, we had done what we were supposed to do. Then I got back with Mike, I guess, yesterday afternoon, then I was back on the phone with him early this morning. I've been talking, talking, and finally I said, I want to talk to the committee. I want to see the selection committee. I want to see what they have to say. And they assured me that they made the right decision, and that they were not interested in changing that decision, even if we gave them 30 more days. And so I told them, I said, well, I'm convinced that what you tell me is where it happened, and I'm supportive of what you have recommended, and I am supportive of it, because I don't have any option except to be supportive. I think Mike Herndon came in here with that last contract, as you'll recall, it was way down the road, the train was about to go out of the station when he came, and he sent it to us because he thought it was okay. He had really nothing to do with it. We got it, we looked at it, we said, no, let's go back out. And then Mike and I talked, and Mark, and we said, let's get a consultant to come in and help us to make sure we cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, and Tim Marshall was also involved to some extent, too, on the technology piece. And when I talked with him about it, he said, no, I think, I think they've made the good decision to stay with Denitex. You know, it's unfortunate that we don't have contracts for two, because they're both very good, but still, that's the group. Denitex is the company that the group chose, and I support their recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Lots of volume of material here that I enjoyed reading. I made the mistake of asking for hard copies, and it turned out to be six inches for tonight's contracts. But nonetheless, I wanted to key in on the value-added portion of the scoring. And from what I can see is that the 184 copiers that expire April 1, just help me through this, the 1.7 million of unexpired contracts reflect those 20 that are listed in here, I take it?
No, it's more than 20.
Okay, they're the COs?
No, I'm sorry. It's about 106 or 7 machines that do not expire until sometime in '14, most, some of them, and then a few in '15, a few in '16.
Okay. Okay, because there's 20 listed in 6B of the pricing, and it talks about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The financial obligations relative to the following contracts. So my question is just around the process. You mentioned absorbing that, the lease cost. So were those leases contracted to Denitex or just other vendors?
Generally, leases are third-party agreements through the vendor. In that case, I believe it was CIT was their leasing company. They're third-party agreements that provide the money for the leases, that are managed through.
Yeah, you don't.
But it's a third-party agreement, right. You know, we pay Denitex who pays that, but our, you know, we're obligated to the lease, so.
So in that regard, there's no, there was no benefit for Denitex versus the other company in terms of buying out those leases?
Well, the way Denitex approached it was, they worked with the leasing company to get the lease, remaining leases absolved, go away, we're going, we agreed to. This is no longer your obligation, is, you know, if we have this contract, we're going to put brand-new machines in, and we're going to cancel these leases. The Image Tech process was a little bit different. It got to the same end, as mentioned. They're doing it through a step lease, so what they basically do is, they're going to write us a check. I think the strength, and I don't want to quote an exact figure, but about one point, somewhere around $1.3 million. If you took a string of payments for each one of those 107 machines, times the number of months left on them, equaled about $1.3 million, give or take. And their method would reduce our obligation on a buyout, because we don't have early termination fees and things like that, however, we would have to put those 106 machines somewhere. But they would write a check to us to pay those lease payments, so. And of course, they, just like Denitex on theirs, when they absolved those leases, they build some of that cost back into the front end. Both of them did that. So, you know, you're still paying for them in a roundabout way. But, yeah, they just got there in two different directions, but they still got there.
Okay, well, my other question is somewhere in the material, on the monthly cost for employee payroll, there was a slight increase, I think from $12,000 to $14,000. It's in here someplace. So I'm asking, is that for current employee raises, or is that?
For the, are you talking about the?
For the 12 employees?
Oh, no, it's not, it's not for raises. I mean, that's the difference between the current versus the.
Let me find that here. I tapped it. There's, there's a lot of volume here. Oh, here it is. Let's see.
While she's looking that up, I'll ask another question.
Yes, sir.
How many pieces of equipment are there, printers and copiers?
Multifunction devices slated to be replaced is 299. Printers are 1,302.
Are three technicians sufficient?
I believe so. You know.
And they're full-time?
Full-time, dedicated to Tarrant County College. That was a requirement of the RFP. They're not to be, we're not to be paying their salaries and they're off working somewhere else, but yes, that's part of the contract.
It was Schedule C, the pricing and overages of the term of the agreement for the 72-month commencement date of May 2013.
Mm-hmm.
$40,000 plus for 12 full-time, and then $12,000 plus for three full-time, and then it's.
Three full-time would be the technicians, the 12 full-time would be the copy center employees.
Okay, then it has down here, beginning May 1, it would be at $44,000 plus, then '14. And I just didn't understand what they were saying on this.
That's a calculation rolling over from our current agreement to our new agreement with Denitex. It's just, you know, rolling that over. The current one ends actually a few days before the end of April, and, you know, of course, we'll have to pay the remainder of April to roll into the new program, so that will be the difference there.
Lastly, how much consideration was given to the fact that Denitex is our present supplier versus someone new coming in?
Well, I mean, I don't know how much that weighed on the committee's mind, so, you know.
It wasn't in your percentages.
Well, I mean, you know, that wasn't, you know, current provider wasn't a weighted percentage, but, you know, what areas would that make a difference to the committee? I would say probably on maybe service and support and implementation plan, that would be my speculation. How much did they consider that? I can't answer that for the committee.
Well, they're here. You want to hear from them? How much they considered that?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Can I call the question?
Ma'am Chancellor, trustees, I think that what we look at here, when we get a committee, and what we've done this, and I've worked both in private.
Mike, get to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. I've worked both in private and in public purchasing. And I'll tell you, in corporate purchasing, you would never have this degree, absolutely would not have a committee who sets out all the standards, it would be done a decision unilaterally. But in the public organizations, we love to do this, but we set a standard, and when we set a standard, we ask a committee to look at the standards, and we take a varying group of people, and we ask them, can you base your standards on your decisions? And that is their decision. Nowhere have I seen in purchasing decision that there's not going to be some subjectivity. There will always be, because that's the human nature. The only thing that you can look at is when you have quantitative data. So if you have, so we try to ask some quantitative data and some qualitative data. And I would venture to say that if you take 100 people and you ask them to look at and rank something, they may all rank the same, and they may all rank different, but this is the process that we're using, and we take a committee, and we take the selected specialists, and we ask them their opinion, and we try to educate them, and we give everybody the same amount of time, the same amount of process, and the same amount of access. Having a, how do you say, a company who's been there before, well, there's always going to be somebody who's before, but at the same time, there's always going to be the chime to change. In the interest that, what we've asked them to do is to look is, what's the best thing for our students? What's the best thing for our faculty, and what is looking at? And based on those criterias that we set, I think the committee has done a great job. I stand behind them. And in fact, this is an institution where we actually delegate for a committee of various skillsets and various representations, and actually, the people we're asking to make an opinion are the people who actually are the receivers of the benefit. They're the ones who own the campuses, they're the technical people and everything. And we, as administrators, retract ourselves, what we do do is we set a parameters. And I think the committee has done a great job, and I'm certainly behind them 100%. I love this process, and.
Most eloquent.
And I'm really behind it.
Based on that, Mr. Chairman?
Are we ready to make a decision?
Yes, I'd like to move approval.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve it. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
With appreciation to the committee, with appreciation to all in.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, committee. Any other discussion, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Carter says, has voted against. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your-
Mark, Mike, thank you so much for your leadership on this. We really appreciate it. Good job. Okay, this next one will be really short, right?
Yes, ma'am, I'll make it.
Shut up! We're solvent, and we've got, we're making money.
Okay. No, 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 I still have another purchasing thing, and then we'll-
Oh, no.
On the financial, I have a treat for y'all, but I'll make it very short. All right, what we're looking at, this is, this is one of the processes that is one that I dislike the most, but is a reality in the society that we live in. And what happens is, we're going to have people who have to defraud on balances. And this is a very sad thing. So what causes them to defraud on balances are changes in financial aid, they change their payment plan, or third-party people who promise, companies promised for them to pay, and it did not come through. It causes a collection. So after 180 days, we must send these things to collection. I'll make it real short. What we did is we looked for a firm that would give us a better 10% rate on it, and we also looked for a way that we could have a second collection. And so when we did that, we had an RFP process, we had seven responses, and we evaluated. And so the first place, the highest bidder actually is going from 18 to 22% on collections, and the second highest bidder is 23% on placements. So this is what we are recommending to the trustees. I'm happy to answer any question on the collection process, and we have somebody, if you would like to talk about the RFP process, we also have it. So I'm open for any questions, sir.
Who would be the debtors in this case?
Yes, sir.
And how does that debt occur, if they pay in advance?
Mr. Trustee Heath, what happens is, what you do is, as a student, is the debtor. That is actually the problem. And the problem is, we are always looking for fiscal responsibility, but at the same time, when students don't have fiscal responsibility, some of our younger students, we try to educate it-
Mark, he wants to know how they make the debt.
How do they make the debt? They don't pay the debt. They have a tuition.
Yeah, but tell them what the debt is.
So they should pay in advance for the course.
No, sir, what they do is they have financial aid, sir. And when you change financial aid, say, for example, you drop the number of hours, then you have created, when you dropped, you paid for seven hours, but you drop a course, and all of a sudden, your financial aid says, you must pay it. Or, for example, what happens with some people is they don't realize, this is what we're telling you, when they drop under a certain level, the government does not allow you to, the financial aid goes away. So that burden, when the federal financial goes away on a student, that student must pay us back, not the federal government.
Thank you.
Did I answer it well?
Yes, you did. Okay, do I hear a motion? Okay. I missed that.
I was just going to ask if-
Carter, got it. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mark. Stay up there for a brief monthly financial report.
All right.
Very briefly.
Very brief, I'll make it really brief. This, what I wanted to do for you, Mr. Chairman, but I realized, I didn't realize that we would have so many questions, but we love to do that, because we always want to make sure that you're engaged. Anyways, what we were going to show to you this month was, we analyzed seven months at a time, and we looked at, how do we look against budget, against actual? And what that refers to is by going through this process, gives you, how you know do you have financial strength? And by looking at this process, when I looked at all our revenue, I looked at all our institutional expense, I looked at there, and I looked at every single item that you have, if you look at your, you have to, if we just look at, let's say, if we look at any sheet where you have a percentage that's either high or low, we looked at the whole thing, and what we came up to the thing is that we think we're on target, we're not going to overspend our budget, we're, we have a strong position on our revenue. So my conclusion is that, just like our financial statements, and that's why we have a tan, is in a good condition. Now, the only thing that I do want to go over, and I'll go over very quickly, is, as we promised, and we promised it in our finance committee, that we would review our investments every single opportunity. And what we have right here, what we did is, you can see that all of a sudden, we've decreased our cash for about 42 mil. We've gone from, and so what we did also, what we wanted to point out to the board, is we moved from Lone Star, we moved from Texas Daily, and we moved it to Lone Star Operating Fund. So, because we wanted, we think we're going to get better returns on that. If we look at your total cash, you've got a reduction of 42, but you've got a placement of 30. Again, we see dismal things that are less than 1%, but nevertheless, that's what the market has today. Now, if we compare ourselves, go a little bit, just a little bit lower, if we compare ourselves to the T-bill, I haven't seen numbers like .009 and .12, and, I mean, this is just incredible. So right now, we're looking at a spread of .35 against a T-bill of .09. That's, so that's the best we can see in the market, and that's our report.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is number 34, which is the chancellor's report.
Mr. Greenhill, the board members.
I am not going to do a report tonight. It is 9:30 already, and you have a report in your books. I want to, I'll do a very abbreviated, one thing, we have a few staff, new staff members that I want you to meet. Are they still here? Are they?
They really got broken in tonight, didn't they?
I just, I just wanted to make sure they're still wanting their paycheck, so they're still here. The first one is going to be presented by Dr. LeBlanc from Northwest Campus. Welcome, Dr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, board members and Mrs. Hadley. We've made great progress with Early College High School and the dual enrollment, thanks to the leadership provided by Gary Goodwin. And as a result of all of that movement, we have a new principal, Lawrence Galloway, and I'd like for Dr. Goodwin to introduce him and say a few things about him. While they come up here, I have to say that Lawrence has degrees in economics, and obviously is qualified to be a principal, and is hoping to become a superintendent at some point in time. But he's, has amazing people skills, and has been able to do incredible work with the school districts that we serve.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Goodwin.
Thank you. Board members, Mrs. Hadley, thanks for the opportunity. I just want you to know that Lawrence is not brand-new. He is slightly used. He came to us, you know that the Marine Creek Collegiate High School is in his third year, with next year, we'll have seniors, and we have selected them already. We're looking for building, and-
Go ahead.
What else can I say?
Didn't Lawrence never hurt anybody?
Anyway, Lawrence, Lawrence comes, comes to us from some public and private schools. He's taught math, he's been an administrator, he has a degree, has a bachelor's degree from Southern University, masters from A&amp;M Commerce, and he did come in 2011. TEA told us we had to have a dedicated principal, so you allowed us to have, move Lawrence from the coordinator of dual credit to the principal job, and he's been spectacular. Dr. Hadley, or Dr. LeBlanc is absolutely right. He has tremendous people skills. He can be really tough on the kids when they need to be tough, and he can, he has them in his office, and so you know that they like him when he's the other way. Lawrence, come up here, please.
Welcome. Welcome, Lawrence.
Are you alert?
Yes, I am. I wanted my paycheck.
Good.
Ms. Hadley and the board members.
You know the drill.
I definitely want to take the time to say thank you on behalf of the students in the Northwest Campus, the Early College High School. They came a while back and presented to you, and you're providing them a tremendous opportunity and changing lives literally every day. We just had a parent meeting tonight with our next wave of 100 students, of bright eyes who have yet to step on a high school campus, so they'll step on a college campus before they step onto a high school campus. And they were just bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, asking a lot of questions and ready for the school year to start. So I thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc. Dr. Peter Jordan has an introduction or two. Dr. Jordan?
We'll try to make this as quick as possible. Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, Mr. Greenhill, board members. I'd like to introduce to you two individuals who are not new to South Campus or TCC, but new in their roles. First is Nicole Minor. If I could ask her to step forward. Nicole Minor is our new Director of Campus and Community Outreach for the South Campus. In this capacity, she oversees initiatives that include community outreach, the Family Empowerment Center, room scheduling and events management, and campus communications. Most recently, Ms. Minor served as Coordinator of Academic Support Services on the South Campus. She had this position for four years, and also worked with me and the academic leadership of the campus to deliver professional development and academic support to students. In addition, she started our wonderful campus newsletter, the monthly newsletter called The Learning Curve. Ms. Minor is a Chicagoan who has relocated to Texas and joined Tarrant County College after working for the state government in Austin, Texas. She holds a bachelor's degree in organizational communications from St. Edwards University, and a master's in project management from American Continental University. Help me welcome Nicole Minor.
Good evening to Chancellor Hadley, to Mr. Greenhill, and all of the board members. I am so very honored to step into this role and to serve Tarrant County in a different way. Very excited about all of the initiatives that we have under our wings in the Family Empowerment Center, and I want to express my gratitude also to both Dr. Jordan and our Vice President of Continuing Education Services, Mrs. Gladys Emerson. I am sure that we have your absolute support in all that we do. This is one of the babies that belongs to our chancellor in her insightful vision, and I'm very honored to step into this role. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
She should probably know, Chancellor, that I didn't know there was a master's degree in project management. You could get a master's in that, but we do have a lot of projects.
Yes, we do. We need that, don't we?
We do need that.
Absolutely.
Which is part of the reason we hired Nicole. I'm also pleased to introduce Dr. Jade Born as the new Director of Counseling at the South Campus. Dr. Born has over 25 years of experience as an administrator, counselor, and professional educator here in Texas. Before joining the counseling department at TCC's Trinity River Campus, he served as Dean of Students at Lone Star College Montgomery. As Dean of Students at Lone Star, he directed comprehensive student services and developed student programs. In his areas of oversight included counseling, admissions, student records, registration, Bursar, recruiting, he ran the institution, and so on and so forth. As dean, he also-
So forth.
As dean of, as dean, he served as co-chair for the college's Achieving the Dream Initiative, which really attracted us to him, and also served as psychology instructor at Lone Star. He holds a master's degree in counseling and a PhD in organizational psychology. Jade is also a graduate of the Harvard University Higher Education Management Development Program. He holds licenses that include national certified counselor, as well as the licensed professional counselor, counselor credential. Help me welcome, to his new role, Dr. Jade Born.
Welcome, Dr. Born.
Thank you, Ms. Hadley and board members. I'm both pleased and embarrassed by that introduction, but thank you, Dr. Jordan. I want to also thank Dr. Reddow for bringing me here to the South Campus, and I also want to thank Dr. Fulkerson from Trinity River, who supported me for a year while I was there, and I feel pleased to be here and manage the advisors and the counselors and the coordinators who serve our students every day, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to have to start dodging Richard Carpenter. Dr. Carpenter is the chancellor of the Lone Star College District. I'm sitting here looking in Bill Capolo's face, and Larry Reddow is not here tonight, but looking in his face. Was he here? He's gone. He was here, and now, Dr. Jade, and Carpenter is going to be asking me, Irma, what are you doing up there? I said, well, you know, what you say, you can get more flies with honey than you can with vinegar. Maybe we got a little bit more honey up here or something, I don't know. Reginald, if you'll come to the microphone quickly and acknowledge a resolution, Resolution Number 270 from the Senate, the Texas Senate, about Tarrant County College.
Thank you, Chancellor. Yes, this is a resolution from Senator Wendy Davis's office, and there are about, let's see, two for, four wheresses, and a couple of resolves, and I thought I would slowly read each of them to, oh, don't read, oh. Do the resolve. I did, but to summarize, I thought this fourth wheress somewhat captured what I think Trek is all about. And it reads, "Good architecture has a profound influence on the way we live our lives and on our perceptions of the world around us. It offers invaluable insights on the attitudes of society toward public and private spaces, and this groundbreaking building represents the best that today's architecture has to offer." Now, therefore, Tahita, you have a great campus.
Tell them what it's from, Reginald. Reginald, you didn't say that, who sent us the resolution?
President of the Senate.
President of the Senate signed it, and, I mean, that's important, to gain the record.
Yes, as I was saying, the president of the Senate signed it, as well as the secretary. So David Dewhurst and Patsy Shaw, Shaw.
Reginald.
And as I said, Senator Wendy Davis.
Well, this is a great accolade for the college and that wonderful building that we get recognized, first of all, by that architectural group, as one of the 13 places in the whole state of Texas that people ought to see. And then to have that recognized by the Senate is very good for us.
And this is the Trinity River East, our sixth campus.
That is, that's right. Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Thank you. Thank you. The, before I talk about my report here just a minute, this is my mid-year progress report. Somebody wrote me a note and said, we have been sitting here so long, dash, long enough for David Wells to have a new grandbaby. Quinn Parker. Born just a few minutes ago, so David, congratulations, grandbaby number three, right? Number three, I'm trying to catch up with you. Trying to catch up with you.
Oh, that's great.
That's right.
Madam Chancellor, we're not going to stay for the second one, are we?
No. We have so many wonderful accolades, and you can read them all in your books. We won't stay here tonight. One that is not in your book that I want to read is Karen Gaveras was just named Journalist of the Year by the Texas Community College Journal-
Texas Intergaligous Press Association.
Intergaligous Press Association, they got the wrong thing here. Press Association, that is absolutely an accolade. We've got so many wonderful things by our students. Is she here?
Bravo!
Karen, stand up, where are you? Stand up, take congratulations, congratulations. We're very proud of you. Now, you make sure you write all good things about Tarrant County College, okay? All right.
Copiers.
Now, I promised- Now, I promised the board I was going to give you my mid-year evaluation. I'm just going to hand it to you if you promise me you'll read it. If you don't promise me you'll read it, I'll go over every word that's in it. No, we'll read it, okay? And then if you have questions next time, I will be happy to answer those questions for you. You will notice, Mr. Greenhill, there's a place for you to sign because I want to make it a part of the official record. And you can sign that and give it back to me after you've read it, you don't have to sign it tonight.
Okay, I'll read it.
Some of us are headed out to San Francisco, my flight is at 6:45 a.m. in the morning. Some other people are catching later flights and I want you to know that on Tuesday around 10:30, I guess it is, at brunch, Tarrant County College will be center stage, being one of the five finalists for the national award given by the American Association of Community Colleges. So I know we all wish each other well and we hope that we are going to get it. So we'll be thinking about it.
Next is the president's report.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Conrad, do you want to give something on the Governance Leadership Conference? Just a few words?
Just a few words, I attended the Governance Leadership Conference in San Antonio, March 21st to 23rd. It was extremely good conference, learned a lot of stuff, saw St. Phillips College, which is a really interesting place. Just a couple items that I brought back with me and I know that our college has an emergency planning procedure, so, because we've seen that lately, but I would like as a board to hear a presentation at some point of what our plans are for the various emergencies that we could encounter in the college and how the college will respond to them and those kinds of things.
We'll be very pleased to give you that report. We just had a, an incident day before yesterday. I think you will be very pleased at what you will hear. We have a great emergency team. We were at Trinity River Campus for the TCC Leadership Program when people's cell phones start to light up because everybody has signed up, mostly everybody, to get alerts. So we get alerts on cell phones, we get them on landlines, we get them on computer screens, we get them on clocks, we get all kinds of things. And as you may have heard, a suspect was being chased by the Grand Prairie Police and ran onto our southeast campus again, they like our woods. And because the police did not know where the suspect was, our emergency team ordered a shutdown of the campus and it worked beautifully as far as I, everything I know. Dr. Capola was in the luncheon, his phone lit up and he struck out to southeast campus to make sure everything was going as planned. You want to talk a quick second about that? Okay.
Yeah, there we go. It's not something you always plan for, you know, wish to happen, but we had a wonderful team from Lieutenant Lee, Chief Williams. It was so orderly and the students stepped up in knowing what to do on the lockdown. We had the campus locked down from the incident in six minutes. We had, the lockdown lasted for about 45 minutes and in less than 40 minutes, we evacuated the campus. And one of the reasons why the evacuation of the campus went so well and so smoothly was the two new entrances that were put in. If this had happened a year ago, it would have taken three hours to get people off campus, but they were able to get off in less than 40 minutes and with the help of area police, they were able to secure the parking lot so students and faculty and staff can be escorted to their vehicle so they can then be escorted. But everything worked just well and I was very pleased and the students. Many of our veteran students actually stepped up to the plate and took control of a lot of the classrooms to calm a lot of the students down, so I was very proud of them too. And I'm still getting texts and emails from faculty that just were complimenting. Thank you.